Welcome everyone out today and we'll go ahead and get started. Our first line of business, we'll have, start with our invocation. Supervisor Lori Smith will lead us in our invocation and then we'll follow that up with the pledge of allegiance by Supervisor Ronnie Thompson. Will please.
Good afternoon, everybody. Glad you're here with us today. If you'll bow your head, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you today so grateful for the blessings that you have bestowed upon all of us. Lord, we pray for, for our families and our friends, fellow citizens to have healthy, prosperous lives in Franklin County. Lord, we ask that you would bless the work of this board today and that you would give us as a board courage, confidence, and guidance as we seek to work on behalf of all of the citizens of Franklin County. We ask that you guide our staff, support our staff, Lord, and be with us in our walks after the meeting today and keep us safe, healthy, and happy, Lord. We ask these things in your precious name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited to the justice of law.
All right, board, we'll start with the approval of the agenda. Anyone have any changes or deletions or additions they would like to see with the agenda? If not, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. No further discussion. I guess we don't need to roll call for that, do we? Okay. All in favor of approving the agenda, let it be known, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Let the record show there are none opposed. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we'd like to take this opportunity to recognize a couple of our interns, Victoria Butler and John Moore. This summer, they've been working with, with our human resources and our IT departments respectively, and we want to recognize them for their good work and the hard work that they're doing to serve the community. My understanding, John is out of town, but I think Victoria's here.
She is.
I'd like for Victoria, if you would, to come on up and we just want to say welcome to, you can, you're good back there, you don't have to come up front.
Please, like, do I have to go up there?
We just want to welcome you to Franklin County and thank you for the job you're doing and everything you're doing. Thank you. Okay, and at this time, I would like to, we'll have Phil Mitchell. If he will come forward, he is the chairman of the Franklin County Library Board and he is going to introduce to us the new director of the Franklin County Library System and I'll let you give us her name.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, Mr. Whitlow, thank you for coming, thank you for having us here today. I'm Bill Mitchell, said I'm chair and on behalf of the Franklin County Public Library Board of Trustees, I'd like to introduce our new director of libraries, Rebecca Ventola. Ms. Ventola received her undergraduate degree from Virginia Tech. She holds two master's degrees, one in education and one in library science. She has nearly 20 years of experience in public libraries in a small town in South Carolina with the Charlotte Mecklenburg system, a small town in Vermont, and most recently, she was the division manager for youth services at the Monroe County system. So we're very happy to have her here. She is.
All right. Thank you. Come on up. Again, I'd like to say welcome to Franklin County and we look forward to working with you. We, we know and we appreciate the, the hard work that Bill and, and the board have done to, to find you and bring you here and, and just thank you, Bill, and relay, relay that to the rest of the library board as well. And like I said, we look forward to working with you and we're excited, it's a new, new page and a new day for Franklin County Library.
Thank you so much. It's so great to be here and to have a wonderful staff that's so welcoming the past week and a half and it's going to make my job easier just having, already starting with a wonderful staff.
All right, thank you. Anyone have anything they'd like to say to?
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you.
We, we're so grateful that you've chosen Franklin County. I, I know that you'll enjoy your time here and the board stands ready to support you and the, and the trustees and in the work you're doing.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to have Jeff Worley, the chairman of the Franklin County School Board, if he will come forward and he has a couple of people that he would like to introduce to us as well and I think most of you have met Dr. Sears, but I'll let Jeff take it from here.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, thank you for giving me just a few minutes today to introduce the two newest members of our staff. As you all know, Dr. Cobb told us last year that she would not be renewing her contract, which prompted us to go into a superintendent search, which is a fairly long and arduous process. Early May, we were fortunate to hire Dr. Kevin Sears. Dr. Sears comes from us, from Pulaski County where he served as superintendent for, I believe, seven, seven years and for two years before that, he was superintendent in Monroe County, West Virginia. He served nine years as a high school principal. Before starting an administration, he was also a fifth grade teacher, a sixth grade math and science teacher, and also a social worker. He is also a US Army veteran who served in the former Republic of Yugoslavia as part of Operation Joint Endeavor and in Iraq during Operation Iraqi Freedom. He recently moved to Henry with his wife Jane, of, his wife of 30 years and I know, Mr. Tatum, that, I know that excites you, that there's another resident in Blue Ridge District. I can tell you, he has been hard at work, even before he left Pulaski, he was here working very closely with Dr. Cobb's, getting up to speed on all the issues that we have going on now. He's been working very hard and we're excited to have him here and to continue working collaboratively, collaboratively with your board as well as ours. So, Dr. Sears, anything you'd like to say?
Thank you, Mr. Worley, and thank you all for inviting us here today. It's been a great transition to Franklin County. Everyone I've met has been incredibly friendly and helpful and I've enjoyed every second that I've been in Henry so far. We love the house, love the community, and we're just happy to be here and look forward to being involved in more things that are going on in Franklin County.
Thank you, Dr. Sears. So we all know that Dr. Cobb's retired at the end of this year. What you may not have known is our assistant superintendent also retired. Her name was Sue Rogers. She spent nearly 30 years in the division, so that also led to the hire of a new assistant superintendent, Mr. Timothy Overstreet. So he starts his 30th year in public education with us. Prior to accepting his position as assistant superintendent, Mr. Overstreet worked for Bedford County Public Schools for 29 years, serving in a number of roles including high school chemistry teacher, high school assistant principal, supervisor of math, science, and gifted education, elementary principal in two different schools, middle school principal, high school principal, and director of curriculum and instruction. Mr. Overstreet's been married to his wife Heather, a teacher at Franklin County High School, for 24 years and they have three children, ages eight to 22. Mr. Overstreet serves as church pianist and deacon at Mount Ivy Christian Church here in Franklin County. He also raises registered Angus cattle and runs a family farm located in the Westlake area of the county. So, Mr. Overstreet graduated from Franklin County High School in 1989, so we have one of our own coming back to us, which we're always excited to have. He has been with us since June, I believe. Early, early June, Bedford did allow him to come early. He has also been taking a deep dive into everything we have going on, working very hard with all the issues currently, and he is very excited to move forward with all the initiatives we have, our board and your board together. So, Mr. Overstreet, anything you'd like to say?
Thank you for welcoming us here to Franklin County. It's nice to come back to the school division in which I was educated. A lot of changes and a lot of buildings look the same and smell the same as I walk the hallways, but it's nice to be back and looking forward to the things that are going to accomplish this year for Franklin County Schools.
But one of the things we did stress is that we, we feel like we've started to enjoy a very collaborative and working environment between our two boards. We stress that as important to not only Dr. Sears, but Mr. Overstreet and all our staff. But we, by doing that, we feel like that's the best way to move forward and we will continue to do that and it'll be at the forefront of every decision that we make. So, thank you very much for just a few minutes of your time, formal introductions, and I know we will be working together. You'll see a lot of us, I'm sure, in the future, so thank you again.
Thank you. Board members, anyone have anything you'd like to say to?
Yeah, just happy to have you guys. Thank you for, for choosing Franklin County. Looking forward to working for you over the next few months.
Gentlemen, I just had the pleasure of meeting you before the meeting started. Formally, I'd like to welcome you. You have a wonderful school board to work with, wonderful school division with our babies there, and you are very inspiring from the perspective, you've, you have been educators, you've been at other levels within the educational spectrum, and I think that that is to be admired and commended because I think it gives you insights that will, I think, will really be of good use to you in your work as you lead Franklin County Schools. So, don't ever overlook how inspiring that is.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for choosing Franklin County. Looking forward to working with you and I got three headed your way, so I'll be watching.
Our role is dropping, so three more.
We appreciate your help. Be quick, too.
I tell you, it's wonderful to have a Franklin County native in the position. I really appreciate that. And my family reason came from West Virginia, so that's awful good too to have. So, but anyway, I appreciate.
Which part of West Virginia?
Uh, uh, Welles.
Okay. Where my wife is from.
Yep. But, you know, because we moved here in 1909, so I've still got a little West Virginia blood in me. But no, thank y'all so much for choosing this county and thank y'all, the board, for choosing those. I really appreciate that.
You bet.
Thank you much.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to consent agenda. I'd like to remind the supervisors, if you have any questions about the consent agenda, please contact staff prior to the meeting with those questions. With that said, moving to the consent agenda, what's your pleasure?
Just a quick question, I don't know if it's worth pulling it or not, but number four, there's one, one sentence in here, expansion and Summit View Business Park that need to be appropriated. What for Summit View Business Park need to be appropriated? Because there's, I don't have anything in my book that says what that is.
Sure, I, I can.
Well, we've got a motion on it.
Yeah, go ahead, Chris, and you want to.
Sure, and, and Mr. Carter can explain that further. Mr. Mitchell, to your question regarding appropriating funds for the budget, of course, to amend the budget, anytime the county increases the budget over 1% by code, of course, we have to amend and hold a public hearing and have the budget. Previous grant dollars for the Summit View Business Park, specifically the Economic Development Administration grant of $5 million, the revenue share from the VDOT, the balance of the $5 million in the SMART scale, all that needs to be appropriated so we can access those funds. Similarly, for broadband, all the VODI funds that we received, we have to accept those and appropriate them into the county budget. And then the last one specifically was the landfill, the recent borrowing for the $7 million. So anytime either we get money in, whether it's through grants or financing, by state code, we have to, you know, amend the budget at that certain point and that, and that's what that's specific to. It's not additional local dollars, if you will. It's existing grant dollars.
That's all I wanted to hear.
Yes, sir.
Make sure there's no local dollars for the business park, but I just didn't understand. That's all, I'm good.
Okay. Anyone else on this side? We have a motion from Supervisor Thompson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion before we take a vote? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, let it be known, I'm saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Let the record show there are none opposed. All right, moving right along. Mr. Daniels.
All right, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good to be with you today. Got a pretty brief report and then I can hopefully answer any questions you may have. Hidden highlights, so previously, we've done some culvert replacement, pipe replacement on Doe Run Road, that's complete. All of our surface treatment schedule is complete for the county. One note that's not on here, I mentioned it last month, upcoming, but if you've traveled 122 out towards Westlake, you've seen it, we've done some patching on that section that's in preparation for a latex overlay, so that's not the final product. We don't have a schedule yet on the actual overlay, but it's, it'll be this construction season. Moving down to the next 60, the Altice Mill is underway and should be complete by the end of August, maybe a week or so before. And then Commerce Road, I know that's been a topic of discussion in the county for, I don't know, a year, year and a half now. We've talked to Mr. Burnett and Mr. Whitlow and some others. We're going to mill and pave Commerce within the next 60 days. We plan to get it done by the end of August, maybe the first half of September. And that's the industrial access road that was built back in the 90s and we've had continual struggles with it. It undulates. It's, it's, it's kind of weird if, when you ride down there and look at it, it's just up and down, you think this road is terrible, it's rough, but what it is, and it is rough. The material that was used to build it was some, a byproduct, it was slag. And everybody at the time thought that's a great thing, it's inexpensive, it creates good fill, we'll use it. The problem is, it oxidizes and it oxidizes inconsistently and that's what's causing all the problems on the road. So, looking back, it probably wasn't the best thing that we did, but anyway, we're gonna, we're gonna mill it off and, and smooth it up and hopefully that'll, that'll last for a while. Page two, on construction Bar Ridge Road, it's, it's under construction, going very well, and we'll finish that later this summer and that will be hard surfaced for the 1.7 miles. And the last item I've got to note here is we did receive a study request for a person with disability signs on novelty and we've reviewed that and ordered to sign, so we'll be installing those once they come in. And Mr. Chairman, that's my report for the month.
All right, anyone have anything? Go ahead.
Thank you, Todd. Last month, we talked a little bit about the tree down situation in the county. Did you talk to your people in Salem about what we may be able to do to help our firefighters out?
So, Mr. Mitchell, we didn't talk, I haven't talked to Ken King, my supervisor, directly about procedures or callouts and what have you. And we're still using the, the same callout. I did talk internally with our staff specifically about the Memorial Day incident that you talked about and some others, and our response times and what have you. So, so we've discussed it, haven't made any specific changes to our process or procedure, but we have talked about it. I mean, I'm not going to close the door on it, but I don't anticipate the process will change quickly if we make changes. I will say that. But I'll also say, if we have situations where we're not responding, volunteer fire, whoever, firefighters of any type are responding and spending time waiting on us, we need to know that. I need to know it, Brian needs to know it, and we can work to rectify that and try to figure out what happened. Because many times, it's, it's communication, whether, no matter who it's between, many times, it's communication is the issue we found, so.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you.
Anyone else?
On the novelty road, you said the sign has been ordered, the disability sign?
Yes, sir.
And it will be put up?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the Bar Ridge, when will that expect to be start being paved?
Well, Mr. Conde, if I don't have a date, we'll actually do surface treatment. Mid, late August before we, so we've got to do the prep work, grade it, ditches and what have you, and add stone, so, so we're a little ways away, a little over a month.
Yeah. That road hasn't been too bad to grade.
No, actually Bar Ridge, for all accounts and purposes, is one of the better ones that we do and, which is not uncommon when you look at our terrain. When you get down in the flatter country, much easier to do roadwork than it is in the mountainous part and, and the cost of the projects reflect that.
Yeah, I rode down it the other day and looked like it's, should be a simple fix to pave, but anyway, I appreciate it. Thank y'all much.
Anyone else have anything for Mr. Daniels? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along. Carter?
Oh, that monthly finance report, that's going to stall us down.
Mr. Conde, if I try and speed up.
Can I remind you, Mr. Carter, that we are ahead of schedule right now?
I'll see if I can't solve that.
Go ahead.
Just tell us all it's good and we'll go on.
Well, all's, all's pretty good. It could be, it could be a lot worse, Mr. Conde, so.
Okay.
The, so for our financial report through June 30th, first of all, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you, for our, for monthly finance report through June 30th, entire fiscal year, so what we would want to see is revenues at least at 100% of budget and expenses preferably below 100% of budget. So as you look down our monthly chart, you can see that pretty much all of our revenues have exceeded that. The one thing I want to point out that is very significant and is the interest, which is on the revenue from use of money and property line. You can see that's a 600% increase. Well, it's $1.8 million. Reason for that is twofold. One, it's the rapid increase in interest rates that the Federal Reserve has done over the last year, 18 months. The other is action by staff and then the Treasurer's Office to work with our investments to earn higher interest rates. And so those two items combined, especially for the interest rates through about October, since last October for most of this fiscal year have contributed to that, so. Now, what I will say is, we accounted for that in the 2024 budget, so that money is spent right now using and paying for anticipated current operations. So I don't think we'll have a surplus like that in the upcoming fiscal year. It was a lot of timing that had to do with this one. As far as the expenditures, we're, we're pretty much below the 100% in every category, so that is a positive and we'll have some of those savings, so those contribute as well for our overall bottom line. Okay? So to graphically show that for you, you can see the, the revenue is up in June, it was down a little bit in May, so a lot of this is time, excuse me, it's down in June, looking at the wrong line, down in June is up a little bit in May. A lot of this just is based on collections and the timing, especially when you look at the real estate collections that were happening by that June 5th due date. So for our revenue, to break it down a little bit more into categories, for the property taxes, you can see that difference is again, the switch to one time, so next year at this time, we won't see that gap. That's not a concern, that is the switch to one time last fiscal year, where you had that one time payment in June. Otherwise, real estate property taxes are collecting just fine, well with, well above budget. Other local taxes and our state revenue is pretty consistent, not, not fluctuating a whole lot from where we were at this point in time last year. So to break down a little further on real estate, you can see that 20 million, which is that one time, so again, that, that's just because of the switch. Overall, though, what that bottom line is 102% of budget, 102.4%, so we've exceeded what we budgeted. Now, there's still a lot of year-end numbers to go through, we have to look at what may have been prepaid for second half that has to come out, so that may not be the final number, but we still fully expect to meet budget on our real estate taxes. So for personal property, we had good collections for the month, year-over-year at 11.5%, so, you know, $1.6 million almost in growth for the fiscal year in personal property. You can see we were down not quite at 100%, so if you, you know, you remember, I've mentioned several times, we're probably going to miss budget on personal property, but we're within a little less than $100,000, so off of a $15 million budget, I think that's a pretty good, a pretty good estimate there. But we well more than made up for that with other items. So if you remember, we of course had the spike in vehicle assessments and the adjustment that the board rebated back in an essence, in the assessment reduction, so a lot of moving parts to personal property this year that we typically do not have in our budget process and projections. So sales taxes are still coming in strong, we're at 6.3% growth, 440,000, 414% of budget, so above budget again. It did drop a little bit and in these next taxes, we're seeing the trend again compared to last month, it was 6.8% growth last month at 6.3%. So we're seeing a little contraction, still seeing growth, of course, continue to monitor that, but it is something to be aware of. Same thing with meals taxes, so our year-over-year increase is just under 80,000 and so that's about a 5.7%. 113% of budget, still well above budget, but it was 6.2% growth and for May's numbers and in June, it's 5.7%. So we're seeing that contraction again. Same thing with transient occupancy, still well above budget, it's at 173% above budget, $114,000 year-over-year, 37.1% growth. Last month, it was 42.7%, so again, another month of contraction on that. So something we'll continue to monitor, but still growth is positive considering all the factors that these, with inflationary factors that we're dealing with. So for expenditures, the month was, was fairly comparable. It's actually a little below where we were this time last year, but that's something that overall, when you look where we're at, where we would expect to be, there's no concerns on that. We still have months invoices that will go back and be paid through the next 30 to 45 days for prior year services, so all of that still has to be accounted for in the budget. So to break that down by category, you can see, no real surprises, a lot pretty even or a lot of the increase that we're seeing in some of the other categories tends to be more the personnel side, which is the biggest driver of that. No great concerns, as you saw on the first report, we're all within budget. So even though expenditures may be up compared to prior year, it's still below budget and so that's anticipated, no concerns there. So the breakdown, health and welfare, you can see, social services did extend up year-over-year and the programs is actually down a little bit, that's federally funded on a lot of those. The CSA is still below, however, that's anticipated to increase as we, that, just like other invoices, is going to be open realistically through the end of September. So as we get all those invoices in, but we're still seeing rate increases coming for the new fiscal year from all of our vendors and a lot more kids coming into care, so it's going to be a pricey budget line item in the upcoming year as well. There's really no change to our fund balances and reserves from what you've seen in prior months. We have what has been approved in rollovers at this point and our 20% minimum, so we're still at about 6.8 million for what we would have as of last year's audited numbers. Obviously, that technically fluctuates during the year as you collect revenue and spend money. It's a, it's a moving number, but from a static for last year auditor number, last year audited numbers, still at the same number. Still has, have our budget stabilization reserve and our capital reserve on the items. Okay? So a couple of updates, for capital project update, for as far as the literate loan application, so we're still working through that. We understand it's still under consideration for approval. We are hopeful we will receive word on that after the state Virginia Department of Education meets this month. And so that will be hopefully good news that we can bring back to you and move forward in that process, but it's just still through the, the approval process at the state level. We're also working with school staff and our financial advisors, Davenport, to resubmit the construction grant application for that. As you're aware, we weren't really awarded money for some of that and, but there was a resubmission process and it has to do with the scoring and things, so we'll keep you updated as we find more, but it's again, a state level process that we're looking at. But anything that we can do for those projects, grant money or borrowing that with a lower interest rate is something certainly staff is pursuing every, every opportunity. So for economic update, it's a little bit shorter this month. The, the CPI increased 3% in June, which is lower than it has been, which is a positive sign. Of course, the Federal Reserve target has been 2%. They don't meet again till really next week, that July 25th, 26th. And so those, while rate hikes may subside, they did not raise the rate at their last meeting. There's still is a mix on the, the Federal Reserve of whether they raise it again or not. There tends to be a little more consensus that it probably won't decrease this calendar year, but all of that is, of course, subject to economic conditions. So as far as the 2024 budget impact, now that we've entered the new fiscal year, we still have uncertainty in the General Assembly. They have not reconvened, do not know if they will reconvene to address the 2024 budget. So what that means is it affects funding for the county and school operations. There were projections or anticipations on both the county and school side of funding and revenue that would be received and those may not materialize at this point. So I think as we get some finality to those numbers from the state level, there may be some adjustments that need to be made mainly on the county side, the impact, and we've mentioned this, is going to be some of the increases, the additional funds to help pay for increases. Mainly on the county side, the impact, and we've mentioned this, is going to be some of the increases, the additional funds to help pay for increases for staff, cost of living increases. The state right now without, action by the General Assembly is at five percent, not seven percent. So realistically, that's what we're going to probably have to do for staff for now. And if General Assembly action moves and that, that changes and we actually get additional funding, something of course we'll reconsider and bring back to you and update on. But the latest is not promising on any action and movement at the state level. Okay, so last month, Mr. Mitchell, Mr. Ronnie Mitchell, asked about our sick leave. And so wanted to give you an update on that and kind of provide a little bit of information from, and re, renewal on some prior discussions we had. It's been several months on some of these. So, so our current sick leave payout is fifteen dollars per day of unused sick leave, up to a maximum of seven hundred and fifty dollars. That is after five years of service. So anything before five years, there is no payout of sick leave. And that, that's the cap. That is, there is no other option on that. That is the flat rate that is paid for sick leave payout. We did do a survey of neighboring localities. We always like to compare. And so a, a lot of localities use what's called pay time off. They do not have separate vacation and sick leave banks. They do a PTO option. So that really wasn't comparable for us. For the ones that do have a separate vacation and sick leave benefit, some had, there is really a lot of different options across the board. Some had lower payouts, some had higher payouts, some paid it out differently. So on the bulleted list here, this is just the high level of the items that we noticed that other localities were doing. Some only paid out sick leave at retirement, which we pay out any sick leave accrued as long as you've met that five years of service. Some localities only paid out a few retired from that locality. Some had higher payouts for their VRS Plan One and Plan Two employees instead of hybrid. And the reason for that is hybrid employees have a short-term and long-term disability benefit that Plan One and Plan Two do not through the state benefit system. Some had more than ten or more years of service instead of five, so they had a higher threshold in order to pay out. The caps range from three hundred dollars to ten thousand dollars. And so it just depends on that. Some of them also had a cap of a percentage of leave. So in other words, you would only get paid out twenty-five percent of your total hourly balance, whatever that number came to varies by employee. So those were some of the comparisons that we looked at. For us to look at that sort of considerations, did want to remind you, it's been several months. If you remember, we did our employee benefits survey back in the fall. We presented that with a lot of options. We actually had breakdown between low-cost, high-cost options. And actually, sick leave payout was one of those options into considering increasing that. And so that was the November twenty-second meeting. And so we did that as we started into the budget process. Of course, that has a, a cost. That is a budgetary implication for that, depending on where you increase it. Seven hundred and fifty dollars is a very manageable number in a department's budget. Anything higher than that could, could create problems. So what we looked at is staff, if you remember in the budget that was adopted, we did put several dollars towards enhancing benefits. But those dollars went to additional health insurance premium coverage. They went to enhance dental and vision coverage and then applying the VRS health credit, which would be consistent because what we found out is some employees have that, some employees do not. Constitutional's had it, a registrar had it. So by the time we funded all those, we essentially ran out of money. And so while sick leave and payout was not something that dropped off the radar of staff, it was simply a budgetary matter that we will have for future consideration as the way we left it. And so we do not have any other benefit enhancements for this budget for two thousand twenty-four. And, but one of the things that we wanted to bring to you, and of course, you know, budgets are fluid and so things could change. Certainly if it's a priority of the board or there's considerations you'd like staff to take back. But I think for next year's budget, when we look at the two thousand twenty-five budget that will start here in the next three, four months, you know, we could look at increasing that sick leave payout cap. That's if we want to stick with this. If we want to go to a PTO plan, this is a moot point. And so we would work through that with the board, depending on preference. We could look at increasing the years of service required. We could also look at a tiered cap. So the longer years of service you have with the county, the higher your payout may be. So there could be an option that would reward longer-term employees for any separation and payout of sick leave. We could pay out higher for retirement. So instead of just when you leave, we would pay out a higher amount at retirement only. That could be an option. And then of course, looking for VRS Plan One and Two and separating with what we've seen. So these are all possible options, certainly the pleasure of the board, but wanted to provide that update and a little more information from what we're seeing for those around us. And that is it, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Anyone have a question?
Brian, thank you for the sick leave information there. I brought it up last month because, and I agree with you, you know, maybe we keep it as it is for people that just leave. But the people that are given twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five, forty years to this county, basically their whole life, I think seven fifty is a little low in my personal opinion. These are people that have chosen to come to work when they could have easily taken a sick day and they've, they've saved all these sick days when they can easily use them. And I think they should be rewarded for basically coming to work more than their coworker. So I understand if it has to wait till the next budget season, I get that. But I, I would like to see this board really taking into consideration the, the people who are giving us that twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five years of service, not losing so much as a sick leave that they've managed to save their whole life. So thank you for the information. I really appreciate that. Excited to hear about the literary loan. Like, thank Mr. Terry for, I'm sure he put a lot of hard work into that as well, as with the school board. And I'd be remiss if, if I didn't mention, I know I only have six meetings left, but I challenge you and encourage you to continue the funding for fire NMS apparatus for paid and volunteer, fire NMS in this county moving forward once I'm gone. So please keep that going strong for me. I'd appreciate it. That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Brian, did you have something? Did you have something?
Okay. Uh, Brian, thank you for your report. Just a couple of quick questions with regard to the insurance piece you just presented. I think what might be helpful moving into budget, you know, as staff especially, you guys start moving into it this fall, early winter. Of those options available, I think it would be helpful to the board if maybe two or three scenarios could be chosen and some numbers run so that we could look at budgetary impact, given the benefit that we would be looking at to perhaps change. So, Mr. Mitchell, if, if you find that okay, I would, I would ask the board to consider that and Mr. Whitlow as well. Brian, also, the, the monies that are being encumbered from twenty-two, twenty-three, do we have a handle on what that number is or are we just kind of knowing that it's, there's overlap? Is, is there a certain amount that we're expecting that has been encumbered?
From twenty-two, twenty-three, there's nothing that has been encumbered. You're talking about year-end surplus?
Yes.
Nothing that has been encumbered for those funds at this time. Now, as part of the capital budget, there was a million and a half that we dedicated to pay to balance that. But that was over part of that one time switch to real estate. So we, we set aside twenty million. There was an extra million and a half for that. Part of that goes to, to pay for the fire apparatus for Callaway. So there's about a million left in that. So that's obligated, but that's not really year-end surplus. So want to be clear on that. That's kind of that twice a year that's already been accounted for.
And what about on the expenditure side?
There's been, well, we don't have a PO system. And so yet officially encumbered, so I want to be clear when we talk about encumbrances. But there have been no, anything that is a grant or a donated fund technically is always encumbered. And that has to be. We have to roll that money over for that program, that purpose. But anything outside of those items, there has been nothing encumbered at this point. Typically, we will come back to the board at a future, probably September, October typically is where it is, and look at a rollover process for any future funds. I think for us, of course, we're always cognizant of our commitments from standpoints of larger projects like broadband projects, I think. So if we need to supplement a reserve there or something, that certainly would be a recommendation of staff, maybe a capital reserve. But there have been no commitments and that certainly will be something brought back to the board for future action.
Thanks. And I just wanted to underscore one point to my colleagues with regard to your report on CSA. Gentlemen, I am telling you right now, the costs that we are seeing being conveyed from the vendors that are serving our children and young adults, they are not sustainable on a long-term basis. These increases are ridiculous and they're doing it, I think, because they can. And it's, it's going to evolve in running our, the cost of doing business in our CSA budget. It is going to be running it up. But I have been astounded at the level of increases that we're seeing through CSA.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along. Morgan Washburn. Good to see you today. I see we have a
Yes.
fine-looking group there with you. I have to say, before you get started, I have a special soft place in my heart for our FFA students. My daughter-in-law is an FFA teacher at high school. And my niece is at, in Montgomery County.
Okay.
Ag and agriculture is strong in Franklin County. It's important to Franklin County. Thank you so much for y'all coming over today, so.
Well, afternoon, I want to thank the board for having us today. I'm Dr. Morgan Washburn, one of the agriculture teachers and head FFA advisor at Franklin County High School. This year, our FFA students have been able to spread their love and passion for agriculture to thousands of younger students and members within the community. I have several of my FFA officers here today to tell you about the current events that they sponsor and participate in, along with the national recognition that Franklin County FFA has earned this year.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am Katie Wells from the Franklin County High School FFA Club, and this year I'm serving as the president. This afternoon, I'd like to take a moment to talk about our FFA club and highlight our awards and recognitions. Our FFA club is the second largest club at the high school with over one hundred seventy-five members. This year, our chapter won the Superior Chapter Award and we were one out of twenty-three chapters in Virginia to be rated gold, which makes us a national chapter. In order to be recognized, we had to report goals, plans of action, and results on three activities for each division to be granted these awards. Our chapter also won the Public Relations Award, which is an award given to chapters who promote their organization, members, and agriculture community.
Good afternoon. My name is Remington Davis and I'm the Franklin County Treasurer for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. I'm here to talk to you today about Franklin County's career development events, also known as CDEs. Franklin County CDEs are as follows. Talent, which placed second at FFA State Convention. Hypology, which had a first-place team in two thousand twenty-two. Ag mechanics, tractor troubleshooting, extemporaneous speaking, meats judging, which placed fifth, horticulture demonstrations, which placed second, agriculture demonstrations, which placed second and fourth, career applications in horticulture, which placed first, floriculture and livestock judging.
Hello, everyone. I'm Braylon Beamster for the chapter's vice president. I'm here to talk to y'all about our annual trip we take to Indianapolis, Indiana. We compete against chapters all over the nation, sorry, all over the nation for the National Chapter Award. This year, there will be thirteen, fourteen students, three advisors, and we will be commuting with a bunch of different chapters and students all over the, not only the nation, but all over the world.
I am Leila Willey. I am one of the student representatives for Franklin County FFA. I'm here to discuss the Franklin County Agriculture Fair. As some of you may know, during the day, the FFA members set up informational booths where they talk to all the first, third, and fifth graders in the county about all aspects of ag, agriculture, including sheep, goat, swine, fisheries, and wildlife, ag mechanics, small animals, ag production, plant science, vet science, and FFA. FFA officers also intend, attend the opening night on Wednesday night. This year, officers will be selling raffle tickets for a barn quilt and wooden American flag to help with FFA National Convention trip cost.
Hello, my name is Braylon Pruitt. I'm a student representative for this year. Food for America is an all-day event that teaches over four hundred fourth graders in Franklin County about agriculture, including livestock, crops, and equipment safety. It's a program developed to assist FFA members in leadership skill development as they reach out to youth, peers, and the entire community by sharing the world of agriculture. There are over a hundred FFA members that participate, assist in the event to make it successful. The event will be held on the FCH track on April eighth, two thousand twenty-four, and the Board of Supervisors are more than welcome to attend.
Hi, my name is Afrielle Jamison and I'm serving as the Franklin County FFA Secretary for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. Today, I will be discussing our ATV slash tractor safety meeting and Tractor Day. On Thursday, March sixteenth, the Franklin County Farm Bureau's Women Committee, Virginia Tech, and Rocky Mount Tractor put together a farm safety presentation for FCHS FFA students that were planning to participate in Tractor Day on March twenty-fourth. Students that were planning on, planning to drive their tractor to school were required to attend the safety presentation. On March twenty-fifth, FFA held their annual Tractor Day, where over twenty-five members were able to showcase their tractors. This was the most participation ever. In this event, our tractor drivers showed a different kind of eagle prod by driving their tractors to school. Tractor days, tractor drivers create educational posters that were showcased for students and staff throughout the school day. During Tractor Day, our members and students competed in a class competition by collecting pet food for our FFA that we were then able to donate to local organizations to help pets find their homes. This event will be held at FCHS on Friday, March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four, and the Board of Supervisors is more than welcome to attend.
I'm Kelly Palmerly and I'm, and I'm our chaplain for our upcoming school year. I'm going to talk about Teacher Appreciation Week and our, our breakfast and our name plaques we made for American Education Week, November thirteenth to the nineteenth. FFA members created over two hundred and fifteen name plaques for all of our, all the faculty and staff at Franklin County High School. On Thursday, November seventeenth, FFA members organized, set up, and provided breakfast for all the faculty and staff.
On March thirteenth and seventeenth, FFA members traveled to Rocky Mount Elementary and Liam Wade Elementary for Farm Bureau's Agriculture in the Classroom Ag Literacy Week. Students also helped younger kids with a, oh, I missed a part. Um, FFA members read the book, I Love Strawberries by Shannon Anderson. And students also helped younger kids with a hands-on activity, either coloring or planting microgreens after reading the book. There were over one hundred agriculture and FFA students involved and over four hundred elementary students from pre-K to third grade that participated in the event. Throughout the school year, our FFA club has the opportunity to participate in multiple other events, one of those being the Rocky Mount Christmas Parade. Through this, our club is able to be showcased on a larger scale in the community. Our club also started a dairy showing team this past year and had four individuals from our club compete at the South Side Dairy Association Show that was held earlier this year on April twentieth and twenty-first. The team had a great time and placed in their respective divisions. In addition, our club and agriculture classes got to take field trips to Blackwater Bend Dairy and Pacabella Farms, which was a fun learning experience for all. Furthermore, our club took a field trip to the North Carolina State Fair at the beginning of the year and members were able to walk through and learn some educational things about agriculture, as well as have fun on some of the fair rides. and members were able to walk through and learn some educational things about agriculture, as well as have fun on some of the fair rides. Another fun event our club participated in was the Farm Bureau Haybale Decorating Contest, where we decorated hay bales on West Campus, where our theme was "Gobble Till You Wobble", as our hay bales were decorated as turkeys in FFA colors. Lastly, we have also started interest in an ag club at the middle school, which will hopefully draw more interest into FFA as we can reach a wider range of students. With all of the fun events we participate in and more, we are able to make sure our members and officers enjoy themselves and are able to have fun, while also incorporating great educational experiences to teach students about agriculture. On behalf of our FFA club, thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Outstanding.
Mr. Whorley and Dr. Sears, take note of these young people. They make Franklin County extremely proud.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have a few comments if you don't mind. Me being an old country boy, I was raised on the tobacco farm. And when I went to high school, FFA was fantastic. Number one, it got me out of the tobacco fields. But number two is that it showed my roots that this county still cares about agriculture. And, you know, when I come out of FFA and after I graduated, we have what's called a Young Farm Association. And that went on for a long time, too. And I think we've sort of got away from our agriculture heritage. And I am so proud of these people, so proud that they're continuing a tradition in Franklin County that has separated us from a lot of counties. And, you know, I'm just, you know, I can't say enough that I'm just tickled to death that you all continue, and I wish you the best and pray for you. And thank y'all so much for who you are.
Ewan, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, you're thanking us for coming here, but thank y'all. It's truly an honor that future farmers came here to speak to us today, because I think our future farmers, you are the most important people in our country today. You feed everybody. A lot of kids don't realize that food comes from farmers. And, you know, I think what you're doing, Ms. Washburn, in the FFA program is incredible. I see these pictures. I see everything you're doing. Mr. Kuno said to inspire these kids to want to be in agriculture and horticulture. You know, with my business, I mean, you know, and you guys want to get into a trade as, as your career, go for it. Because you're going to find that going into a trade is going to be very valuable one day, because a lot of people don't want to do it anymore. So stay steadfast with that and continue focusing on what they're teaching you at school. And, Ms. Washburn, if you ever need a private sponsor, please reach out. I'd be glad to help if I can. Thank you, guys, for coming. It's truly an honor.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'll just say one thing. You guys get to drive your tractors to school. We don't get to do cool stuff like that up here, but you've given me an idea. Now, I don't have a tractor, but I'm sure I could get one from some of my colleagues.
Not all you want to, if you want to get a hay.
Yeah, indeed, indeed. But I certainly echo my colleague's remarks. You all are our future, without question. And as we pursue our Career and Technical Education Center, it's going to have a large focus on ag. And it's timely, it's, and I think that you all can really set the tone for your fellow students and get them engaged. I think you're very inspiring, and we're very honored to have you with us today.
Go ahead.
Thank you, guys, for coming out, and it's so great to see so many familiar faces sitting there. You know, we can talk about the Crooked Road, we can talk about Moonshine, we can talk about the lake, we can do whatever we want, but deep down, Franklin County's heritage and culture is agriculture. It's what it's always been, and hopefully will be for a long time to come, and you guys are a great inspiration. Like Lori says, we go forward talking about CTE, the ag program will play a huge part in that. And I just want to thank you, Dr. Washburn, for the obvious extra effort you put in over and above what you're paid for through the schools. It's obvious in your program how much it's grown, and I hear it from way too many people, the extra effort you put in. I'd like to thank you for that, and it's obvious in the kids you have with you today. Thank y'all so much for coming. And she's a Snow Creek constituent.
All right, you get the, that's not fair.
Thank you again, and just can't say enough about our ag program. Like I said, I am biased, like I said, family members and other schools. But thank you so much for what you're doing, and as we move forward with the CTE program, we can assure you that agriculture is at the top of the list of our needs that we need to make sure that we support. And as my colleague, Mr. Mitchell, said, you know, we talk about Crooked Road and Moonshining. But Moonshining is what Franklin County is famous for, but somebody had to grow the corn. So, thank you again, and we appreciate you. Back to my agenda, we're still ahead of schedule, and I see Reba's back here, so we're going to move right along. Ms. Reba Dillon, you'll come forward. And after she gets through, we're going to take just a short break. And so I would ask that if you all would stick around, I know some of the board members might like to speak with somebody. And Dr. Sears, I have something I need to run by you before we take off, too.
I'm sure they hadn't seen that, but it works out perfect that they were here today. I got three things I want to go over with you all. First of all, I want to bring you up to date on the walking trail. The parking lot will be completed Friday of this week, and at that point in time, we will start building the trail. Now, the way that we raise the money for the projects that I do for you all, and this works out so perfect for those kids.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, as you all can see, those are going to be placements. Those are going to be put in the restaurants. And this month, we're ordering 3,000, thanks to Ronnie Thompson for giving us the ideal. I thank Kevin for designing it for me. So we will put those in the restaurants for people to see to promote the fair. Each month, we will do that for whatever project or whatever's coming up, like Land of Lights in November, I will put six, we will order 6,000, and they'll be put in the restaurants. And we will ask them to use them for placements for people to read while they're waiting on their food. This brings us in money because we let the sponsors pay for the stuff, okay? Now, the next project, and I'm hoping you all will approve this project, we have the money completely in place for the walking trail. Now, we have most of the money in place for the disc golf course. What I need right now is y'all's permission to go forward and build it. So here's your packet.
Do we love Reba Dillon? We love you, Reba.
And I would like to introduce Jeanette. She's with the Rotary, and her son, who will, has developed the golf courses before, and also helped do the one at Wade Park, and they're going to explain it all to you.
Hello, everybody. It's nice to meet everyone today. I think I've met Lori before at Rotary. I am president of Smith Mountain Lake Rotary Club, and I'm also the grant writer for Smith Mountain Lake Rotary Club, which has been, you know, just a lot of fun.
If you will state your full name, please, for the record.
Jeanette Handy.
Okay.
So I'm the current president, and I'm the grant writer, and this is my sixth year writing the grants for the club. Although it's sometimes challenging, it's also equally rewarding. My hope is to continue writing successful grants for our local community and to extend out to incorporate our local officials, businesses, and government entities. All past six grant endeavors have been successful, which include working with Parks and Rec in Bedford County to revamp the Manita Disc Golf Course. We have also helped Lake Christian Ministries, Agape, and Hilling Strides in Boons Mill. Not only did we revamp the disc golf course in Manita Park, but we also, in conjunction with the, with the Disc Golf Club and Bedford Parks and Rec, we hold a tournament every year in November called Manita Madness, which raises lots of food for the local food banks in the area. This year, our club is focused on serving and benefiting Franklin County and the surrounding areas. Our goal is to establish a strong working relationship with the county and Parks and Rec to build a new disc golf course in the Lake Watch Plantation area located off of Lake Watch Drive, much like the successful Wade Park Course in Rocky Mount. We are already ahead of the game, thanks to Reba, with a lot of financing, as well as volunteers for the endeavor. My Rotary grant request this year was for $8,000, which provides the funds for the disc baskets. And the club will be doing a lot of the hard, hands-on work. We also have volunteers ready that were responsible and successful in the creation of the Wade Disc Golf Park. We asked the county to match this $8,000 grant, which will supply the remainder of the amount needed to build this course. And we chose a disc golf course for several reasons. There are more than 11,500 disc golf courses in the world, and 60% of them are in public parks. On top of that, 91% of all courses are free to play. That means all you need is a single disc. You could probably play for $10 or less. And rural America is changing. Over the past decade, there have been an increase in population to non-metropolitan areas in the U.S., which has changed the character of rural communities. Comprised of small, amenity-based communities with a higher quality in life than its urban counterparts. These locations are popular to tourists seeking both natural and cultural-based resources. Parks and Rec specialists are charged with the task of providing quality recreational opportunities to attract visitors while protecting our valuable resources in the land. They aim to preserve and promote the unique local community character. But they do this with challenges, because a lot of the rural economies are deprived. With that being said, disc golf is a perfect solution, because it's low cost to build and minimal labor to maintain. Courses are designed to take into account the natural lay of the land, to challenge the player, including a variety of obstacles, sometimes ponds, trees, bridges, and they're each planned to alter the throw a little. Due to their relatively simple design, disc golf courses can be found anywhere from open fields, community parks, and forests across America, and they are consistently rising in popularity. When there aren't as many local course options, a disc golf player is willing to travel, and they will go wherever they are. It also has social benefits. Though it can be played alone, disc golf is a group activity. Families can play together as part of a local park trip, family outing, or picnic. And a lot of disc golf clubs emerge and hold weekly contests and mini tournaments. These weekly leagues provide a means for new and old members alike to share experiences. And additionally, these clubs not only serve as a surrogate steward for the course, helping in routine maintenance and organizing events, but players form social bonds through love of the sport. And arguably, the number-one factor from a management perspective to developing a disc golf course is cost. Disc golf excels over all the other sports, because the courses are easily constructed, costing a local community a fraction of the cost of other sports facilities, even though play of disc golf is extremely affordable. And from the upkeep side, it involves little maintenance, other than routine park maintenance, such as trash removal and some cutting of the grass. On the economic plus side, disc golf courses can create revenue for communities, and this can be a great benefit to rural communities in the time courses can sometimes pay for themselves. It not only utilizes underused areas in the communities and community parks and neighborhoods, it results in safer spaces, less vandalism, and less litter for pieces of property that are just sitting around vacant. A disc golf course encourages the dramatically increased use of significant areas of land. A wise man once said, "If you build it, they will come." Disc golf is a prime example of this moniker. When events are built from the ground up via strong relationships with local players, local government, and local businesses, there is a huge potential for success across all fronts. This is done via creativity and a willingness to work with prominent locals and energetic community leaders to be mutually beneficial to all. Please let me know if you have any questions. I'll try to answer them if I can, and if not, Reba or some of the guys helping build the course can.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
Reba, you actually accidentally gave me a question. That's your worst.
I'm actually going to sit in for a while, sit in for a while, but Jeanette just there.
Okay.
Because I'm sure you all don't quite, didn't quite get it all. We have applied for a grant from the Rotary for $8,000. I can't put the money up front and let them reimburse me, because I'm a private citizen, and they will only reimburse to a company or a commercial or a nonprofit. So what we're asking you all to do is you all will put the 8,000 up front, and the Rotary will give it to the county, so that you all will get reimbursed. I can't get reimbursed. So that's what we're asking you all to do, and I don't think you all will have a problem with it, because you'll definitely get your money back. I'm just asking you all to give me the permission to go forward.
All right.
We need a motion for this. I'll make a motion. We move forward with it, and I got one question for staff. Where can we get that money from to start with?
Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, Mr. Thompson, to answer your question, likely the board's contingency line item, and then certainly reimbursement base, we can put that money back once it's reimbursed, if the grants are achieved.
I make a motion. In my motion, I want it to be contingent that we move forward with this project.
Okay.
Can I second that, Mr. Chairman, and some discussion on the second, if I may?
Go ahead.
I just have a question, Mr. Whitlow.
Yes.
Of course, with anything like this that comes before us, you can always know I'm going to ask about staff capacity, picking up mowing and upkeep on the course. Has that been discussed? Are we comfortable that we can pick this up? I know that Mr. Chapman's staff are very tight, don't have a lot of them.
Sure.
I just want to make sure that we go into this endeavor with, you know, understanding that we're going to do our part.
Thank you, Ms. Smith, and that is the right question to ask in terms of staff capacities. I have not had the conversation with staff, per se, at this point. I know we have staff here available today. Not necessarily wanting to put, you know, them on the spot in terms of the long-term maintenance and so forth of, you know, a project of this nature, in terms of, I know Mr. Chapman's in the audience, and again, he may be able to speak in terms of the current maintenance of the current disc golf course at Wade Park, maybe the intended maintenance, long-term maintenance of this particular property in terms of the size and scope. And maybe there have been some preliminary conversations. I'm not sure. I'm just looking at, Mr. Chapman, saw him in the audience there, so he can't get away.
Well, we haven't gone that far. We've talked about a few options for the maintenance, maybe using the trustees sometimes or volunteers. I mean, our Rotary Club does a lot of, you know, maintenance at different places. We even do roadside cleanup. So we would probably be out there sometimes, but certainly not all the time.
Yeah, again, we are, I feel like I want to say something very positive, because we love working with Rotary Clubs and community groups and civic, you know, groups to improve our parks. Gosh, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be here without volunteers like Jeanette and Reba. It's probably a little early in the processes. Gosh, Jeanette has a number of great people about designing this course, and the course is being designed right now. And just talking to some of those folks, I know they're still kind of laying it, laying it out to see, like, how much mowing there's going to be involved, like where parking is going to be involved, so it's kind of early to tell, like this, the scope of it. So I don't have a great answer at this point about, you know, the frequency of mowing. It is a little bit, for us right now, it's a little bit off the beaten path. It's not close. It's a little more difficult for us to get a person over there. That doesn't mean it can't be done. So at this point, I have a great answer for you, Ms. Smith, about the scope of the maintenance.
Well, the reason that they're not up this way is because we need more recreational activities
That's right.
in my district. And Reba, thank you for working on the Smith Farm Project and the Disc Golf. These are very needed in my district, and
The other thing I might add is, the main thing I need the approval today was, is to make sure we get the $8,000 grant. But I've already got the, the rest of the money in cash into the account. So it's like, if something happened, y'all wanted your money tomorrow, we can give it to you out of our own account. So it's like if something happened, y'all wanted your money tomorrow, we can give it to you out of our own account. But I don't come to you all unless I've got the money to back. And I'm hoping that the county would let the inmates go there once a month and do a walk-through and a cleanup, and I'm hoping they'll do the same thing for my trail.
We'll have to take that up with the sheriff. That's his call. But right now, we have a motion and a second on this. There's no further discussion. Madam Clerk, will you take a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Tommy Cundiff?
Yes.
Supervisor Lori Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronnie Thompson?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronnie Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Nick Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Mike Carter's absent for the vote. Chairman Tatum?
Yes. You have your mind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, I'd like to say something.
Go ahead.
You know, in Franklin County, some of the biggest things we're behind on is recreational activities. And I think this is very important that we get this through. And I really appreciate Reba bringing this out. She's put a lot of time into it, a lot of effort. And I applaud them for the effort and what they've done. Thank y'all so much.
All right. Mr. Chairman, if I may, on the matter of maintenance of recreational facilities and parks and so forth, and thank you, Mr. Chapman. I know I put you on the spot there. But it is the right question to ask, as Ms. Smith noted, both from the locality perspective, but really from a regional perspective. And we're having ongoing conversations, you know, in the greater region. We're going to hear from our regional partners here this afternoon, Virginia's Blue Ridge and their Roanoke Regional Partnership and the Regional Commission. The greater conversation, not just on our local parks, but also some of our national parks and our state parks in the region. What makes our area so great is the beauty that we have and the opportunity for recreational amenities, as Ms. Dillon noted, and really the demand that we're seeing for disc golf across the area. But also, that is also a challenge in terms of the ongoing maintenance and upkeep. You know, we've got a lot of great properties and facilities all throughout the region. And so it is also a local conversation, but it's also a greater regional conversation in terms of making sure that we certainly provide the capacity to have these amenities, but also long-term maintenance, that we don't forget that. So it's a good continuing conversation that I think, you know, we certainly need to have locally, but also regionally. But I know the desire's there, and certainly when those grant opportunities come by, I certainly understand not wanting to pass those by and up. And so anyway, I just thought I would add that as we look ahead going forward, because we have such a beautiful area of the place to live and recreate in, and making sure we keep what we have looking good and maintaining that. Very important.
Mr. Chairman, Reba, I just want you to know, I will be your advocate to work on any continuing efforts that we need to put forth with regard to maintenance. You know, we're hand-holding in this thing together, and it's my district, and I'm very grateful. And we're going to make this happen.
With that said, we're going to take a break. Regional partners, annual updates.
He sucks.
This is cold. They all must bring gifts. No? No?
Jeremy Holmes, Executive Director of Roanoke Valley Allegheny Regional Commission.
Thank you. I have a presentation. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I very much appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this afternoon. I'm Jeremy Holmes. I'm the Executive Director of the Roanoke Valley Allegheny Regional Commission. And I'm going to give you a little bit of an update on some things, a handful of projects over the last year of regional significance that did have an impact in Franklin County, and give you a preview of some stuff that we've got coming up in our next fiscal year. I do always like to start these things with a little bit of a Regional Commission 101, a primer on what exactly the planning district is and what we do for our member localities. We are the regional convenor around issues of more than local significance, primarily in the areas of community development, transportation, housing, economic development. What we try to do is look at the big regional challenges and opportunities and help our member governments find the most cost-efficient economic solution to those issues, whether that's through the planning work that we do that may lead to implementation, bringing in funding for project development, whatever that happens to be. So we're here to help save our member localities money, the taxpayers' money, and our regional businesses' money. We do know and recognize that Franklin County is a joint member of both the Roanoke Valley Allegheny Regional Commission and the West Piedmont Planning District Commission. You live in West Piedmont by the Code of Virginia and have volunteered, and we appreciate it, to join in with us on participating in those conversations for the rest of the Roanoke Valley Allegheny Highlands region. And I think that's really important. We appreciate you being at the table. So much of the growth in Franklin County impacts and is impacted by what's happening in the Roanoke Valley in terms of recreational resources, cultural resources, workforce. We know, for example, a significant number of commuters are driving back and forth between Roanoke and Rocky Mount every day. And I believe it's Empire Bakery, when they moved from Roanoke to Rocky Mount, they took all those employees with them, and now they're still driving up and down 220. So those are the things that we look at, understand those connections between Franklin County and the Roanoke Valley region. And we do work very closely with West Piedmont so that we can marshal our resources together to help provide services and planning projects for you. We do think the Regional Commission is a pretty good investment. We updated these numbers this morning. For every dollar that we bring in from local dues and state resources, we leverage that against $11 that come from state, federal, or other sources. That's money that comes back into the region to build things, to run programs, to plan for the future, to understand our community. So that helps make sure that we have the resources we need to understand how the region can best develop. And I also do want to take a moment, as we talk about the commission, to talk about a little bit of a change in leadership with the commission. We have our chair and vice chairs' terms ended, and we have a new chair and vice chair coming on. I'm very excited that Ms. Smith was voted in June as the incoming vice chair for the Regional Commission. And we're excited about undertaking our strategic planning efforts, our legislative agenda efforts and so forth with her and our leadership team. And you have a great advocate in Franklin County on the commission board. So I wanted to make sure I provided that recognition. I'm going to talk about just three quick projects to sort of illustrate the kind of work the commission does. The first is the Roanoke Valley Collective Response. This is a program that started as an all-volunteer collection of advocates, of healthcare providers, community service workers, elected officials, including Delegate Sam Rasool, who got together to figure out how the region responds to the opioid addiction crisis. That came under the commission's umbrella as a formal program in 2021 with funding from the City of Roanoke and Roanoke County. And that now has been formalized to integrate with the rest of our programming. And its footprint is expanded to include the footprint of the entire Regional Commission area. When it started, it was a partnership with folks in Franklin County, Roanoke City, Roanoke County, Craig and Bodatot. And now we've expanded to cover that whole region. What that group is doing is looking at the whole breadth of how the community responds to the addiction crisis, not just in the sense of kind of that immediate public health need, but all the other pieces that support our friends and neighbors getting integrated back into the community. Things like, what can we do for recovery housing? What kind of housing is needed? How can we get folks stabilized so they don't re-enter a cycle of addiction? Workforce re-entry. How can we make sure that folks come out of this and can get back in the workforce to become productive members of our community again? Transportation. How do we get resources to them? Or are them to resources for folks who maybe had a legal issue and have lost a license? So those pieces are all things that we do with the commission anyways, and now we've got to integrate this piece into that to figure out how we can help this particular group of people that are at a crisis moment. We've also been very involved, and you're probably aware of the Virginia Opioid Abatement Authority. So we were involved at the front end of that through engaging with the new leadership and the public participation process, with sort of guiding what are our regional needs? What do locals actually need from this money to be able to address these issues? And now on the back end, now that they have opened the granting program, what the Collective Response does is provide technical assistance program development for our member localities to access those funds. So as an example, we did sort of a dry run, you could say, with the City of Roanoke for their spring, their very first grant opening of the abatement authority. We worked with the City of Roanoke to define a couple of projects to see what that granting looked like. It was new for them and for us. And we were able to obtain over $700,000 in funds to do things like, apart staff the Collective Response and make sure we have those resources, but provide preventive education for early childhood through the Roanoke's West End Center, embed peer recovery specialists and law enforcement and other sorts of programs. So we've already started engaging with Franklin County, and I've worked a little bit with Mr. Burnett, on bringing those resources that we have through the Collective Response to help define, you know, whatever you need from us to define some programs for the fall cycle that's coming up in October. Another area radically different from the opioid crisis, the commission houses the Roanoke Valley Transportation Planning Organization, which is the federally designated planning agency that looks like, it looks at the urbanized area of the Roanoke region. And kind of the thumbnail description of what that agency does is it's a really important part in how federal dollars get programmed onto major infrastructure projects in our area. So there's a partnership between us, VDOT, and the feds on making sure, prioritizing projects and getting funding for those projects. It also helps fund the leverage that goes towards smart-scale projects in the urban area. While the focus of that group is sort of internal on that urban area, it's obvious that the decisions that are made there on big pieces of infrastructure like 220, I-81, and 460, impact everybody. So Franklin County, led by Ms. Smith and Mr. Whitlow, came to us to ask to be a member of the TPO and participate in those conversations. And in June, the TPO Policy Board unanimously voted to bring you to the table and be a part of that discussion. And that's, I think that's extraordinarily critical. We know a lot of the growth that's happening in Franklin County is, it will impact and is impacted by those infrastructure decisions that we make. And having you at the table over the next 10 years, as the next, we get to the next census, is going to make sure that we don't make any mistakes in where we make those investments, that you know what's coming and that we know what you need, and that you're a part of that whole regional conversation. So we're excited to have Franklin County on board as a part of the TPO and look forward to those conversations. Also, within the transportation discussion, we undertook last year a regional travel survey. So this is the first comprehensive survey of sort of commuter behavior, choices, decisions that's been done since approximately 2007, when VDOT and DRPT came in and asked, what do people want? How do you get to work? What are your barriers to accessing work? Those sorts of questions. This is developed in part to drive a strategic plan that our commuter services program will be undertaking in the fall, but also to drive all of our other transportation programs, our rural long-range plan, our rural bike and trail planning, our urban trail planning. Because what this is going to tell us is what citizens want. It's not necessarily the infrastructure piece. So we're asking questions about van pool, car pool, park and ride, transit. You know, DRPT has had some really interesting and successful tests with micro-transit in rural areas that doesn't look like the kinds of things we've done before. And so this information will help us understand what citizens in the region want, how they want to get around, and how they need to access work. We know we often have a real hard time getting input from our rural communities, so we spent extra money, extra time, and extra effort to oversample and get surveys out to all of our rural communities to make sure that we really understood what folks wanted. So one of the, I think, the most interesting things that's going to come out of that is we did ask a lot of questions about telework. And five years ago, this wasn't a big deal, but we know the nature of work has changed significantly, and that means how people travel even peak times is a different thing now because of telework. So this will help us understand that kind of behavior, particularly are people working for businesses within the region? Or are they teleworking to businesses outside the region? And help us get a good sense of what these workers look like and why they live in the places where they live, and what that means for you when you're looking at community development, neighborhood development, and that sort of thing. So that data's out there. We're in the process of finalizing the report now, and it'll be available in the fall in a raw form, but also supporting all these other planning efforts. We do a lot of stuff. I just wanted to pick those three to show kind of where we touch on transportation and behavior and human services. Some of the things that we're looking ahead for in the next fiscal year, housing. If there's one thing that folks ask me about or talk to me about, or a problem that all of our localities have, it's housing. And so we are building off of the work the commission did a couple of years ago with our comprehensive housing study and the resources that we currently have through Virginia Housing's PDC Housing Development Grant, where we're actually subsidizing affordable housing to build a strategic housing program within the commission with the goal ultimately of helping get stuff built. We're going to look at what our role is, how we can best assist our localities, what are the barriers, you know, what can we do from a regional efficiency perspective? Training labor? Is it bringing more Virginia Housing money? Is it revolving loan fund? Those kinds of things to be able to bring resources in to start to address the housing issues. So if you're very interested in that, please talk to me or Brian Hill and our staff. He will be leading that effort. This year, we're really building what are the needs, and then we're going to start to figure out how we implement those housing plans. Right now, there's more money at the federal government than there ever has been and probably ever will be through the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, and we're committed to trying to make sure that some of that money makes it to the region. So we're, in the next year, making available additional resources through our staff for grant writing, technical assistance, and becoming familiar with some of these big federal competitive grants. There is a lot of money. The problem is it's all national competitive grants. They're not necessarily designated locally. So we're trying to increase our capacity to write a competitive grant, understand the requirements at some of the federal level, and make sure that we can help our localities access these funds while they're still there. We got it a couple of years before the IIJ goes away. We were able to help, for example, Rocky Mount apply for a RACE grant. Didn't get it, unfortunately, but they were one of the most qualified localities in the region, and our staff worked with Mr. Wood on developing that application for planning grant, and we want to increase our capacity to do that. IIJA covers roads, bridges, solar farms, charging stations, railroad track relocation. There's all kinds of programs that are one-time, potentially transformational opportunities for our communities, and we want to make sure that we're there to assist. Within that, we're increasing our capacity to just provide technical support and analytics to get a better understanding of what the region looks like, the direction it's going. We have a website update that's coming up that will include interactive online maps that allow you to drill down to information about what federal programs might a particular census tract be best qualified to access money for. Most federal programs have some differing levels of what a distressed community is, or what is a community that might be able to access funding without match. The rules are all different, so we're going to try to simplify that so that you can look at your neighborhood, your district, identify a problem, and see what federal programs might be available to assist that. And within that area, you know, one of our roles is basically serve as a liaison between our locality members and our federal partners. And we do a lot of work with Economic Development Administration, with Appalachian Regional Commission, FHWA, but we know there are opportunities through a number of other federal partners that we need to capitalize on and get better at understanding. So USDA, for example, does a lot of housing work, and we know that there's probably resources there that we're not tapping into. I happen to be meeting with the State Director of USDA tomorrow to talk about what resources we aren't using or how we can better assist as a regional commission to leverage those and get things done in our community. And looking at federal partners we haven't worked with before much at all, EPA and DOE on renewable energy projects, hazard mitigation, resiliency projects, or those sorts of things. So over the next year, we will hopefully have lots of opportunities at the Regional Commission level to bring these additional resources and bring some programs to bear that we probably haven't even really looked at before. So that's my update. I'm happy to answer any questions. I just wanted to give you a flavor of what we've done and kind of what we're looking at. I think the bottom line is we're here to assist. We have capacity to assist. So if there's a need that you have, you reach out to us, and we've got staff across all kinds of program areas. And if there's a staff that doesn't... And if there's a staff that doesn't know something, we can probably reach out to a partner or another planning district to find out someone who's tried to solve the same problem. So we're here to help. I always hate that we're government, we're here to help, that never comes out right. But that is in fact what we're here to do. So please reach out if there's anything we can do. And again, I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have now.
Well, I'm happy to hear that you're joining up with them. Is that what I heard?
Yeah, I've been on the board, but I just took a leadership role.
Well, I can only be good for y'all.
We're very excited.
Can you elaborate more on this rural long range plan you just spoke of? Because it's the first I've heard of it.
The rural long range transportation plan? Yeah, that's
What strictly how it benefits us?
So that that is just one of the the products we work on with VDOT that establishes sort of the long term priorities for rural transportation needs that helps when project opportunities come along, when funding comes along. It helps VDOT identify, you know, where they should put their money first. The the rural plan is much more of a guidance document versus the urban plan, which is has a more regulatory teeth with our with the feds. So it's just a way that we can gauge, working with our rural localities. And and to be clear, that information comes in. We don't kind of push that out. It is it is developed by our rural localities. So it's a tool to help go to VDOT, the General Assembly, et cetera, to identify what our needs are and how we can try to, a pathway to get those met.
So just my four years' experience on this board, I mean, Frank County doesn't get a lot, I'll be perfectly honest with you. You know, would it be safe to say y'all are more like a liaison for for us and the federal government? Is that what you said or is it federal and state?
For federal and state, yeah. So we know, one of the challenges, and actually this is something that Ms. Smith has brought to us to help work on, is that rural localities across the state don't get the resources that our urban localities do. Either the state or the federal level. So we try to do what we can with with what the state and feds give us, but we recognize that there's an opportunity to advocate and push for trying to getting more resources. So things like the long range plan, that's a tool to help identify what those priorities are. We are, we need to do more work at trying to identify that gap and work with our legislators. And that's frankly, we haven't done that a lot in the past as a planning district. And that is something that we are now getting more involved with, with working with our general assembly members, working with our legislators across the state. In this case, joining up with other rural areas to say, look, this is a real need. We've done as best we can, but the funding formulas or the other tools that are available just aren't meeting the need. So that's what we're trying to do is just figure out what our role is and to bring more resources.
I think the biggest thing you can help your rural localities on is all the unfunded mandates that come come down on us.
Yeah.
It's it's really a disgrace in my opinion, but thank you for coming today. I'm glad to hear Ms. Smith's going to be taking her better role with you guys because she's tough.
Don't be scared, Jeremy.
You should be very scared.
You should be very scared.
Anyone else have any questions for Jeremy?
Stinker.
I don't see any. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeremy.
I appreciate it.
All right, John Hall, Executive Director, Run of Regional Partnership.
Give me just one second, John.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Please share with you our annual update from 2022.
Do you want, do you want me to put the slide?
What's that?
Oh, if you want to just start the slide.
Is that okay? Okay, thank you. Some quick background. So the organization was established in 1983. It's a public-private partnership, which means half of our funding and half of our leadership is exactly public and private. We have a budget of around 1.6 million dollars. We have eight employees, 37-member board of directors and a 17-member executive committee on your board of directors. Your chief elected official and chief administrative official serve. On the executive committee, your chief administrative official serves. Again, we match every public dollar with a private dollar, leveraging your investment for impact. And our team, again, is eight members strong. On the business investment front, which includes research, the business investment function as well as executive function, there are more than 85 years of experience on our team as it relates to managing projects, competing for opportunities and working with local communities to increase competitiveness. The entire staff represents more than 100 years of experience in the field of economic development generally. So there's a wealth of of experience available to you. This did not render correctly, so I apologize. But I would say that every dollar, again, contributed by Franklin County is leveraged with another 13.6, okay? That's the regional approach, which means all of our governments, our eight governments, contribute according to a per capita schedule. And the private sector now matches every public sector dollar with actually a little bit more than 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 one to one. So we were a little bit more private than public. Private investment is was recently increased by way of a capital campaign that was completed last year. It was quite successful. And and again, not one local government can replicate the value here based on our overall budget leverage and the services provided. This map reflects our labor draw area. The partnership represents the eight localities in light green. We work to assist our local government members on a daily basis. And it's the partnership approach, which requires our local partners to work together with us intentionally as a team to close opportunities. So closing the opportunity depends on a lot of local factors, such as real estate suitability, site readiness, local assistance available permitting, et cetera. But we're also available to 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 assist our local governments with competing for expansion opportunities among the existing businesses as well. And we work with several of those throughout the region. And Franklin County is a key part of the Roanoke region. Just point out, for instance, when you look at commuting interchange, which is the number of folks who commute in and out of Franklin County into the rest of the Roanoke metro, that is easily double what happens to the south. And so again, there's a strong labor force tie with Franklin County and the larger Roanoke region. And we're very proud to have you as a part of of the region. Our strategic plan was completed by the public and private sector leadership and assisted by the EY, Economic Advisory Services. Those four areas of action include supporting new locations and business expansions as well as innovation industry growth. Of course, we have talent attraction and supporting regional workforce development, real estate strategies, place making and livability. Our leadership consultants and staff believe these four areas translate into business growth, expansion and new locations for the region. We have a track record to show that it's working regionally. Last year, there were eight successful announcements regionally, which totaled 435 jobs and $132 million in capital investment for the region. That's four manufacturing projects, three distribution projects. And Worth Rev Car in particular has a substantial office expansion additionally.
I'm sorry, can you go back to the last slide?
Certainly.
These are all new businesses that y'all brought in?
There is one expansion, no, two expansions and the rest are new locations.
Do you mind telling me which localities in our partnership that these each went to?
Certainly. North American Special Laminations went to Roanoke County. Worth Rev Car expansion in Roanoke County. Green Thumb Industries, actually the largest project last year, in Allegheny County in an existing building. Wombat Camper, City of Roanoke. Virginia Transformer Corporation in Bottotack County. A D U E Pile, City of Roanoke. Atlantic Constructors, City of Roanoke, Lowe's, Roanoke County. If you total that up, that is the overall economic impact by year. Last year was the largest in since 2017 in terms of the overall recurring annual economic impact of those projects at full ramp up. So again, substantial year of success regionally. Wanted to share a bit of information here, traded sector versus non-traded sector. Partnership focuses on traded sector opportunities. Those are businesses that generate most of their sales from out of state, resulting in new jobs, wages and revenues, okay, for the Commonwealth and for the region. That that builds wealth, okay, for for an area. The main benefit being of that is the economic multiplier effect. A traded sector business generates more jobs than a non-traded sector. So your non-traded sector business doesn't typically have much in the way of a multiplier. So the new wages that are generated by a manufacturing entity or an office location selling businesses or goods or selling goods or services outside the region, sorry, generate additional wealth and employment, okay? And that is demonstrated here where one direct manufacturing job can equal up to four, around 4.4 total. Over its time serving Franklin County since around the mid 90s, the partnership has assisted with 19 new location projects and expansions, going back to, again, to the mid 90s. This represents nearly 1,800 jobs for Franklin County and $228 million of capital investment. This generates roughly one, around a million dollars in real estate and machinery and tools revenues. And that's before the multiplier impact. We estimate the $89 million in annual consumer spending generates another around $445,000 of annual revenue for Franklin County. So again, significant significant return on investment over time. These figures are from analysis involving the jobs EQ package. The lead pipeline is strong. With the strength of combining assets and resources of the public and private sector and the overall regional real estate portfolio, we generate more interest. Our projects and prospects are all up over the last year. We have some of the largest opportunities from a capital investment and employment standpoint as well as wage perspective than our region has seen in some time. And we're seeing those opportunities on a regular basis. One thing I'll point out, if you look at the numbers, projects and prospects, by the way, project is when we know the sector, we know the employment and and investment of a project. And a prospect is when one of those opportunities visits our region. And if you take a look, again, at 2022 versus 2019, 2019 was a pre-pandemic year. Our projects and prospects are more than double those years. So there's more opportunity here regionally in a post-pandemic time than pre-pandemic. Yes, sir.
Can you go back to the previous slide again?
Certainly.
Out of projects and prospects, out of those, what are they for Franklin County?
What are they for Franklin County? I have a written report, which I can provide as follow-up.
Please.
And would be happily do that through Chris, perhaps, for distribution. I can tell you that the trend, the trend has been of one of increase. In 2022, we had four prospects served to Franklin County. Franklin County had full share of all the project opportunities. So the projects that are generated are distributed to all of our local partners, okay? Real estate suitability and readiness do define ultimately if it progresses, okay? But in terms of prospects, we did serve up four and that is up 100% from the year prior. It's 100% increase from 2021. We'll provide that as follow-up. The lead pipeline, this year, I was just happy to report, year to date is up 67% over last year. And so we were already double pre-pandemic years and we're continuing to grow. So more opportunity available regionally than ever before. We work on a daily basis to promote the development opportunities in Franklin County and the entire region. Each year, we have the VEDP project managers typically visit for familiarization tours, sorry, otherwise known as a fam tour. This year, not only did we bring the project managers to Summit View Business Park and the Franklin County Rocky Mount Industrial Park, as we always do, we hosted the project managers for dinner and entertainment at the Rocky Mount Burger Company and Twin Creeks Distillery. This is an opportunity made possible by virtue of participation in the Roanoke Regional Partnership. We also toured the Harvester Performance Center. It was a great opportunity to highlight local assets and we collaborated very closely with your Economic Development Director, Ms. Sims, and Ms. Minix on that. Business investment initiatives, we're on the road constantly, developing opportunities, developing interest in the region. You saw recently our inquiry number was up and this is why. So we have been very aggressive in developing opportunities, not only through travel marketing and relationship development with consultants, but also custom lead generation campaigns. Happy to report, we do have a fam tour coming up, which will involve top consultants visiting our region in October. And those dates were just distributed, but we'll be working on planning that program very, very shortly. Our outreach methods are diverse, not only, again, relationship building with consultants and with the state of Virginia, but advertising both digitally and a little bit in print as well as custom lead generation. This is an example of some of our digital ad campaigns that are focused on specific sectors. These are the ads that follow you throughout the internet. And these ads follow chief executives as well as consultants. We connect local leadership with state leadership. In the past year, we invited those on the board, the partnership board, and our largest investors to join Secretary of Commerce and Trade Karen Merrick for dinner. This invitation included the Franklin County Chief Staff and Chief Elected Leadership. We also hosted Jason Elkuby, CEO of VEDP, for an investor meeting here that was attended by your economic development staff. We are available to assist with business-ready site program applications and pitches. The partnership subscribes to and when it comes to real estate support. We subscribe to CoStar and we track all real estate transactions and trends. These are resources available to local economic development. We produced this marketing video for Summit View Business Park, enjoyed working with Ms. Sims on the content and production of that. And real estate readiness couldn't be more important to project success. We have to demonstrate a development timeframe. And and I think you've done a wonderful job at Summit View Business Park. Partnership staff is always available to discuss trends in real estate demand relative to project requirements. And this remains a standing offer for local economic development and leadership. We also are undertaking a site study this year to evaluate additional investment opportunities regionally. And we've worked closely with with your staff on that as well. On the talent front, we refreshed the Get to Know Noek brand this year to be more regionally representative and to include the outdoors more intentionally. We are launching a new regional talent portal and working on collaborative marketing with Virginia's Blue Ridge as well as the Roanoke Blacksburg Technology Council. We did host our Experience Conference last year, the first in-person talent conference after the pandemic. Was, I'm happy to report that we had an outdoor market showcasing regional small businesses, such as the J. Bond Bishop Mercantile and JP Leatherworks, both Franklin County businesses, who were able to gain exposure with young professionals who attended that conference. The home for the holidays, we hold, we do that every year. It's a great livability campaign as folks are visiting for the holidays. Boomerangs and others who have moved away, those are opportunities to get them to come back to the region. And we were happy to to feature the Cupcake Bakery, Cupcakery Bakery, sorry, as well as the Christmas with the Templetons in Rocky Mount, as well as the Land of Lights. And Do You Want to Build a Snowman Trail, among other assets, we did feature Franklin County assets as well. We are building a new talent portal, which will include a new jobs board and a jobs board 2.0, which is vastly improved in terms of its approach. Again, co-marketing, tourism, talent and technology are key partners, Virginia's Blue Ridge and Roanoke Blacksburg Technology Council. And we're doing this on a regional basis, which will reflect assets and livability options throughout the entire region. Onboard ROA is a YP and summer internship program aimed at acclimating new talent and retaining talent. These are services that are available to your employers. Again, the job board we launched this past year is the most comprehensive listing of employment opportunities in the entire region. We couple this information along with livability. It's an effective and strong talent attraction tool and we are seeing positive in-migration numbers for the for the region. Our events generate about $3.7 million in economic impact. These include, these are profile raisers, brand builders for our entire region. That includes the Blue Ridge Marathon, Down by Downtown Music Festival, the Go Cross Event and the Go Outside Festival. And of course, we're working in partnership with VBR to compete for the USA Cycling Event that was in the Roanoke Times this morning. So we're very proud of that effort and it's been a real boiler room effort, collaborating on structuring the proposal to the state as well as working together on the bid, communicating the event's importance to economic development efforts, to statewide leaders. So we enjoy working with that fine group and close partnership and I'm glad to see them here today as well. Of course, project outside on the outdoor front, those funds that we generate through our events are reinvested in additional assets throughout the region. are reinvested in additional assets throughout the region. $23,688 in funding has been provided for a lake access point at Smith Mountain Lake Community Park, a trail in Wade Park, tools for volunteer trail builders, and a bridge of the Pig River in Wade Park, as examples of ways that Franklin County has benefited, I think that's since, since 2020. We are also, Mr. Whitlow mentioned, maintenance of outdoor assets, and we are working on an outdoor asset study to identify those assets that are regional in nature, as well as to identify ways to fund them sustainably and their maintenance thereof. Of course, the partnership through RONOC Outside Foundation has provided $5,300 in sponsorship dollars for the Ramble Weekend and the Padling Film Festival since 2018. And we're proud to support that fine outdoor event, which we think is a key part of our regional message. And lastly, I'll point out that we are leading the way in data and research as thought leaders in the community and investors and local partners can seek our assistance with a variety of data requests, from migration to workforce, annual GDP to housing. Our staff has the technology and know-how, as well as more than $20,000 in annual subscriptions, to provide information and data which can benefit you in making decisions. This is the sort of data that our customers require in evaluating the market. Chairman and members of the board, that is my annual report.
All right. Anyone have any questions? Go ahead.
Mr. Hall, thank you for being with us this afternoon.
Certainly.
Appreciate it very much. Of those four prospects that you referred to Franklin County in 2022, I'd like to step back a minute. How do you all determine what prospects you send to Franklin County?
Ma'am, the client decides what site and what community they will visit, based on the assets and advantages of that piece of real estate. We, we do not decide. We provide every opportunity to every local partner. If that local option meets, if the real estate meets the specs of that user, it is transmitted for evaluation. It is not our option to eliminate.
Because the number is very troubling to me. When I look at your slide on the number of prospects and, and so forth on that one slide, initially in your presentation, four visits and some of, you know, obviously, this is a Roanoke, Roanoke County-centric focus, it appears to me to be. I'm just saying, and for the amount of money that we contribute to the partnership, I don't believe that we're seeing the direct benefit from achieving business, you know, getting businesses, you know, to come here. I know you're checking boxes with these, one of these prospects when they call, in terms of what they're looking for. And then Franklin County either meets that or they don't, correct?
I want to stress to you, Ms. Smith, that Summit View Business Park is one of three options that is presented on all of our outreach, because it is one of very few 100-acre-plus options, which is in high demand. I would very much welcome the opportunity to discuss some of the trade-offs, so to speak, the readiness concerns, maybe, maybe more appropriately, the infrastructure concerns that may be limiting your success there. But it is client-driven, what actually ends up being a prospect visit.
So when you say infrastructure, short, what are you referring to at Summit View?
Well, at, at present, and there has been some clarification of late, but the timeline relative to establishing natural gas service is somewhat of a limiting factor.
I'm just, you know, I'm a nuts and bolts type gal, Mr. Hall. And when, you know, we critique our budget every year, and I see what we're contributing, I, I'm seeing through your annual report that there are ancillary benefits through some programming and, and things like that, and I compliment you on the Summit View's presentation on this. I'm not seeing, and I don't feel that we're getting a good result from the money we're spending.
$1.4 million of annual revenue from legacy projects is being generated because of activity the partnership helped you secure.
But dating back to the 90s, right?
We are also available to assist with your expansion opportunities at the direction of local economic development.
Okay.
So we do have a talent program that has been very effective in selling companies and businesses on understanding the labor available for expansion. I would encourage local economic development to engage us in that, because I think we can help sell those expansion opportunities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When you talk about local economic, you're talking about our economic director and her staff, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct, because local economic development takes lead in business retention and expansion. You own the relationship with those companies once they locate here.
Right. So kind of leads me to my question. So it's, it's my job to speak for the citizens of this county, and especially our staff, who work very hard. Was there a RONOC Chamber meeting last Tuesday?
A RONOC Regional Chamber of Commerce meeting? Yes, sir.
Perfect. And from what I understand, the economic director from every locality that is in the RONOC Regional Partnership was represented at that meeting.
No, sir.
Except for ours.
That, that is not correct.
Okay.
Sorry, but there are.
No, it's fine.
Yeah, there are two, there are two other localities who are north, who were not part. But I should make that clear, that was not my event. I accepted an invitation to moderate the panel.
To moderate.
Yes, sir.
But it kind of leads me to my point, like, we're competing with, let's face it, RONOC on everything. I mean, the, the businesses I had you call out, you know, the RONOC City, RONOC County, Bodataut. And I, I agree with Ms. Smith. I don't see the fairness when we're competing with the other localities around us. I thank you for what you do for us, but I think we deserve a little bit more for, I mean, it, it should be an equal partnership, right?
It is an equal partnership. You get all leads and opportunities. I should point out also that I, I am a taxpayer of Franklin County, as a matter of fact, a resident for 10 years. I believe firmly in the advantages of this county.
Okay.
I experienced them personally, and am a firm believer in the Summit View Business Park investment. I do think with clarity on, with the grading work that you're investing in, which is kudos to you, and with clarity on the natural gas development timeframe, which I understand should happen, hopefully, after the Supreme Court rules, that you will have a much more successful piece of real estate there in terms of generating and converting prospect leads.
It's funny you say that, because that's the first time I've heard it. This is my fourth year on the board.
Oh, really?
Absolutely.
Okay.
No one has ever said that we had to have that natural gas for our business park to be successful in there.
Well, interesting, most of our leads actually request it, if not for process, then for heating. And the, certainly, my offer is standing. I would be happy to sit with you and talk about feedback from the park.
And I understand, you were the moderator, I know that.
Yes, sir.
My beef is like the RONOC Chamber, there was no shout-outs given to Franklin County whatsoever.
Again, respectfully, sir, I did verbally recognize Ms. Sims, and I said, I appreciate all of our local partners and our private investors, and I want to recognize Ms. Sims, who's in the audience with Franklin County. I'm sorry about your beef with the RONOC Regional Chamber of Commerce. I understand you are members, and I'm sure Mr. Sichao might be interested in hearing that feedback from you.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I just, just taking notes and just, the infrastructure concerns, I, you know, I thought we had a Knock It Out of Park Business Park, I mean, I think it's pretty special.
It's a fabulous business park. It absolutely is. Again, we have to be able to demonstrate development timeframes.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Not trying to come down, just trying to make it fair for our county, that's all.
As a taxpayer, I certainly would, would, would want to see that successful, but I appreciate your, your feedback and appreciate your support most of all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Thompson.
I have no questions, but I reserve the right to have comment after Mr. Howard does his presentation.
Anyone on this side have any questions or comments? Go ahead, Tom.
First of all, thank you for the presentation, I appreciate it. You know, I've noticed in life, everything has a time and a season. Maybe we hit our time, maybe we hadn't hit our season. But I understand that the interstate structure plays a whole lot to it. But the question I want to put back to you is when, when somebody comes to you looking for a place to establish a, a business. Now, do you take into consideration what their business is, or do you put everything out there that they can see would, would help every county? If you know what I'm trying to say. Let's just say that you're on the side to locate over here.
Yes, sir.
Okay, do we have the water? Do we have the gas? You know, that's what I'm trying to say. When you present something to somebody, do you present the whole aspect of it, or you just present the, the features that they're looking for?
We, okay, so we, we receive requests for information from, from clients.
Yes.
And they have specific requests. They let us know what their demands are.
Yes.
We respond to their, to their questions, but we also provide a sales piece, such as the video that we showed, that is a marketing-focused piece that focuses on the advantages of, of your park. Does that address the question?
Well, I guess what I'm trying to say is that when you have a substantial business you want to locate, do you show all the properties? Or do you show properties that would be the best concern? Like I said, water, gas, whatever. I mean, I hope you understand what I'm trying to say.
Well, perhaps the best way I can respond to that is to say, we, we have an active outreach schedule. Summit View Business Park is presented to every consultant.
Okay.
Every opportunity that we have a conversation with.
Another question, on the trade and non-trade, isn't it better for a candidate to have more trade than is non-trade?
Yes, there's, yes, traded sector.
Because I noticed we was way behind on our trade, like 30-some percent. And yet our non-trade, we was up 60-some percent. And you can't survive as a country without a trade. You can offer all the services in the world, but you've got to have a trade.
Oh, I agree. Now, the traded sector is, is the most advantageous. I don't, I'm not sure which numbers you're referring to, because most of our opportunities.
Well, when you first put up a projection, you said it was like 30-some percent trade, and then like 60-some percent non-trade.
Oh, those are state numbers. I, I think they're, anyway, I'm sorry.
No, I mean, I'm, I'm just saying, though, that my question is that you need more trade than you do non-trade.
Without question, without question, you need more. This is, this is a third of all state employment.
Okay, third, okay, all right, I'm sorry, I said percentage, but third.
That's okay, that, that's all state employment. Okay, so the point there is a third of all state employment is in traded sector jobs, but that, that third of employment generates most of the state wealth, right? Two-thirds is in things like entertainment, services, retail, and restaurant. That's a recirculation factor. Point being, we focus on the traded sector opportunities, because they generate wealth. And of those jobs that we shared with you, with you since the mid 90s, and some were much more recent than, than the mid 90s. And you'll see in the written report, which I provide, Mr. Whitlow, the majority of those, in fact, if, I think all of them are for Franklin County, traded sector employment opportunities, generate ongoing wealth in the community.
Now, getting back to the, our roads and stuff, is, are we in a bad location as far as bringing in business? You know, we've got Interstate 40 about our way, 77, and stuff like that. 81's probably 30 minutes away. Is that an impacting factor?
Specifically to Franklin County or, or region?
No, I'm, I'm just talking, well, yeah, Franklin County. I'm talking about our business park. I'm talking about, you know, like I said, we, we basically 30 minutes away from Interstate 81.
Sure, sure.
And we, we've tried in the business park to accommodate, you know, everything we can.
Yes.
So is that a slow point for us?
In spite of the distance, the partnership has been successful in bringing large distribution operations to tour the Summit View Business Park, including nationally branded companies, which we can't speak about, unfortunately. But we have brought very large distribution projects to visit and tour the Summit View Business Park.
Okay.
Well, like I said, I appreciate everything you do for us.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate the questions.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I, I do want to just say, I do appreciate what you do. I just, you know, just fight for us.
Absolutely, sir. Yes, sir, without question.
Mr. Hall, out of the six or eight larger businesses that you put on one of your slides that went to Roanoke and Roanoke County, are any of those supplied by natural gas?
Be happy to discuss that detail with you. Of these, there is one for sure that I am aware of is not supplied by natural gas, and that is Green Thumb Industries, which is a pharmaceutical operator. It was in the Cardinal News this morning. They, they cultivate medical marijuana product.
So everybody else has gas?
Every other locality has natural gas?
No, on your slide, these businesses that you bought in.
Wombat Camper, Small and Entrepreneurial, I'm not familiar with whether or not they use natural gas, to be honest with you.
Because what I'm hearing you say is that that is a predating factor at Summit View Business Park that you feel in your role is keeping us somewhat unsuccessful in getting these prospects in the door, is infrastructures. And I think more specifically, you bought up natural gas. So of these larger folks that are coming in, I, I don't understand why we're not getting more prospects to the area if you're directing larger businesses to Roanoke and Roanoke County, when they are not requiring natural gas necessarily. I mean, what are, why aren't we getting the prospects that we need to be getting from your partnership?
Sure. I, first and foremost, I am not directing opportunities to the city of Roanoke or Roanoke County or Bodataut County. I am presenting all opportunities to the client. Client makes decisions. First point, Green Thumb Industries does not require natural gas, but they required an existing building, okay? Every one of these projects is, is a, is a matrix of requirements, okay, in all fairness.
Sure.
If, if there's one comment about infrastructure readiness and site readiness, natural gas is, is, and has been a limiting factor. A large number of industrial users require natural gas service. Now, in the past, we have been able to show the property with the timeframe that was known in any given point. But it is more or less well-known that there is, there are questions about the timeline for the Mountain Valley Pipeline.
And so with that opinion that you have with the unknown, are you rendering Summit View Business Park a non-participating factor in, in business prospects?
No, ma'am. I present Summit View Business Park at every opportunity with every consultant, at every opportunity I have to, to offer it. It is one of the premier real estate options we have regionally. Kudos to your investment.
I just have one more question, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hall, because some of this, you know, you guys are in a lane that I'm not an expert in. What is the difference between what you bring to localities versus what localities' economic development departments do?
Certainly. We have eight staff members, we have a wealth of experience. We have staff that are dedicated to answer the questions of clients, to, you know, economic development's a team sport, okay? And it's a collaborative problem-solving exercise with that, with that company. We have, we have staff that is dedicated to developing opportunities as well. We are not spread thin, so to speak, among a number of different roles, which may include business retention and expansion, business appreciation, small and entrepreneurial business. We are focused on the mission, which is to generate opportunity for you and to respond to that opportunity, and to assist Franklin County in landing new locations, as well as assisting with expansions. We are dedicated to that mission every day.
Is it, are you the single point of entry? Does every, in your catchment area, are you the single point of entry for businesses to go to, to get into the localities?
No, ma'am, I, I don't think so.
Okay.
No.
All right, that's, that's my clarifying point. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
What percentage people require natural gas, or require gas? I mean, like, a business coming in, what percentage of people are looking for that natural gas?
Certainly. Sir, I would say anywhere from two-thirds to three-quarters. Although I will say, when it's not clear, we respond as though there is no natural gas requirement, okay? And even when there is a natural gas requirement, we will respond with Summit View Business Park, along with the timeline to establish service.
I understand.
Yes, sir.
Like I said, my question was, oh, you know, how many people are actually looking for gas?
Yeah.
In a, in a, in a park?
It's, it's, it's hard to disentangle, I would, but it's at least, you know, around two-thirds.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Like I said, once again, I appreciate what you do. I appreciate the information today.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson, did you want to make your comment after Mr. Hall or after?
Yeah, I want to hear everything before I make my comment.
Okay.
I want to hear what Mr. Howard's got to say as well.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Anyone else have anything for Mr. Hall?
I can take one. Mr. Chairman, from what he's saying, nobody, I think, on this planet can tell us when the natural gas is going to be. I mean, it's obvious they were going, going one day, and the next day they're not. But I think after we do, just from hearing what, and this is his field, after after we have a date and know when the natural gas is going to be there, we need to set a timeline and have a plan going forward. And I would like to include Mr. Hall in that conversation. We need to have a timeline of what we're going to do, what we need to have to get that deal going and have a timeline, a plan and stick to it. But from what I'm hearing today, we gotta, we gotta wait for the natural gas and after that, we need to get that other stuff rolling.
Yeah, and that's completely out of our control.
Can I make one more comment? Uh, you have a property, Franklin County Commerce Center, that was quite successful in attracting investment over the years without natural gas. It, if gas service were not to be established, it's just going to require a certain level of patience. You will be successful, that, you know, with acreage and with what you've done and development standards, that park will be successful. Your timeline will be greatly accelerated with natural gas service.
I mean, we're out of time. When the, for the last two years, the economy's been just about been shut down. That's what we've been dealing with. Well, I'll make my comment after.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I, thank you for your support and your partnership. We value Franklin County as much as, it is a key part of our region and we are thankful, we're thankful for your investment. It's a key leadership that you took upon yourselves with your investment in Summit View Business Park. Thank you for that. Without that, we can't generate opportunity. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Mr.
Alright, moving right along. Mr. Howard, Landon Howard, President of Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
It's so good to be here with you and, um, one of my favorite places in the world, Franklin County. And I have to say, thank you. That's the main reason why I'm here. It's not just to report out what we're doing, but the fact that you're our partners. And we, we really appreciate that. And that way, I, in my Tennessee accent, I can say, you know, when it comes to our region, if you don't need a ski slope, we pretty much have it. Which is really true. I'd also like to tell you how much I appreciate Chris Whitlow. He serves on our executive committee, provides incredible leadership and advice to me. And I will thank him and get to work with Kevin Tosh and Michael Burnett and Paul Chapman and Beth Sims. You've got a great crew down here. And so, it's really a pleasure to be able to work with all of them. For those of you that who may not know who we are, we're the Region's Destination Marketing Organization. That means that we are responsible for marketing this place as a place and a consumer brand. We have sixteen hundred business partners that are part of our efforts. We act as an information broker for attractions, restaurants, hotels, transportation, for the sports planners, visitors, et cetera. And our job is to, we believe capitalism works. We believe creating wealth works. And our job is to define where, where we are, identify who we are and tell people why they want to experiences. Now, I'm not going to read this brand platform, but y'all've got a, a packet in front of you with this information in there, but what it really boils down to is Franklin County and Smith Mountain Lake and Philpot are just an essential part of what we sell every day. When you see the, the yellow here, here's, here's our partners, uh, Bodatot, Roanoke, Roanoke County, Salem and Franklin. And, uh, everything, every single hospitality business that's there, whether it be hotels, resorts, restaurant, receive our services for free. They don't pay a penny. Be part of what we do. And the, the reason why is because you support us. And so, with that enables us to represent them holistically to the marketplace. We feel very strongly, uh, just as John Hall just said, that we are the first state for economic development. So, people come here to visit and then send, uh, many of those folks want to live here and then work and then business will thrive after that. So, what's our job for you? Our job is to create occupancy tax collections, amusement tax collections, dining and sales tax collections so that you can pay for your services for the, for your people. Our job is to make money for you, plain and simple. Yesterday, I presented this Roanoke City Council, told them exactly the same thing. So, where do we stand in terms of our competitors? This is with the people that we find ourselves standing in the hallway, waiting to go in to make a presentation, trying to get a piece of business that they're after too. You see Asheville and Virginia Beach and Richmond and Chattanooga, we're at five point one million dollars. And, uh, being from Tennessee, I'll tell you that if everybody puts a little water in a lake, it makes everybody's boat dock rise. And that's, that's how we feel about it. And so, everybody puts in their fair share. Now, how are your transient occupancy taxes doing? Well, of course, you raised your rate from five to seven, but it's all going in the right direction. For fact, if you look at all five jurisdictions, we've gone from, in about ten years, for a little over four million to nine million dollars in transient occupancy, occupancy tax collections and will soon be at ten million in, in, uh, bed tax. And, uh, this is where I get to share some information with you. Airbnb. Short-term rentals are here to stay and, uh, all over the world. And, uh, Airbnb produced three, three point eight million dollars, uh, in unit revenue in Franklin County alone last year, uh, in, in the time period that you're looking at there. And we're talking the last twelve months. We, we have programs that we can, we track every bit of this. Here's the biggie. Uh, Verbo, uh, is pulling in about four point five, uh, million dollars, uh, in, in Franklin County alone. And if you add those two up, that's, uh, means that there should be about six hundred thousand dollars in additional occupancy tax being collected in this county from just these short-term rentals. And, yeah, I don't, I'm not sure you're getting it. So, let's look at the room supply available. You far exceed city of Roanoke, Bodatot and Fr- and Roanoke County. We'd love to recruit a new hotel to come into Franklin County, but right here's your hotel. Short-term rentals, we have thirty-six thousand, uh, rooms available. And to get, with room demand, you actually sold fifteen thousand rooms last year in these short-term rentals and they brought in four point five million dollars in revenue, okay? It went to, so, we, we're not able to track it because they purchased it from DC or Philadelphia, wherever they might be from. And so, that, it actually shows up there. And then the big check is supposed to be coming to you all, uh, from Airbnb, et cetera. So, how's all this partnership work? We're under a performance agreement with the city of Roanoke, city of Salem and Roanoke County. We get three points of, uh, the bed tax. And, uh, Bodatot, it's two sevenths, and then we, uh, request each year two sevenths of the general, from the general fund from Franklin County. That, that's a, called a participating locality. And so, we're all partners together. And, uh, and even though y'all put in about fifty thousand dollars right now, you get the benefit of five point one million in what we do. Cause we don't differentiate from one product to another, uh, one jurisdiction to another. Everybody's equal. So, what I'd like to do is, uh, with, I've got one of the brightest VP of Sales and Marketing as you'll find anywhere. Right up here, her name's Debra Wright. I want her to come up and show you all a little bit about what we just finished in DC.
Thank you, and, and no pressure with that presentation, right, or that introduction. Uh, Virginia's Blue Ridge is a mountain metro adventure. Uh, we really lead with this, with everything that we do for our regional branding. You know, we have everything that a large destination or a large city has. It might just be on a little smaller scale. But then it's, everything is surrounded by the mountains, the outdoor amenities, and everything is in close proximity. So, we feel like this really sets us apart from our competitors. And looking in this pyramid, it kind of shows you, we're highlighting those outdoor recreation and those sports, uh, combined with the arts and culture events and history. And then craft food and beverage, which is so important. And then at the base of that pyramid with the accommodations. And I like showing it with that because you have to have those accommodations for people to come. But as you go up that pyramid, you really do see what sets us apart. Our primary and secondary markets, you'll see in yellow is our primary market. Really, it's the major cities that are in Virginia and North Carolina. And then our secondary market is basically the eastern coast as it relates to Interstate eighty-one, uh, Route two twenty and the Blue Ridge Parkway. So, those are our major corridors as we are a drive destination. So, we represent the entire region, but having said that, just want to make sure that you all are aware that we do have a Franklin County landing page. So, if you go to the site and do a backslash Franklin County, that site is there and has all the partners that Landon mentioned. In addition, there's a Town of Rocky Mount landing page, as well as Franklin County tour page. So, it's kind of suggested a tenterer's and what visitors can potentially see when they're here. So, we want to highlight, you know, all of our signature attractions like Smith Mountain Lake. So, you'll see there's a landing page there, as well as Wade Park, the Crooked Road and the gateway to the Crooked Road, as well as Fairham College. So, how are we driving people, um, to the website? You know, featuring things like blog posts, um, that are touting our history and the moonshine history especially that's relevant in Franklin County, as well as Booker T. Washington, which you can see some of the page views here and how popular these are. Social media is huge. So, again, we're really promoting the events that are happening here in Franklin County. Of course, with Pirate Days that just happened, um, Scare Code Trails, um, also that local art and culture and everything that we have here, local food and drink. As well as I would be remiss in not mentioning that we really appreciate our partnership as it relates to sharing photography. You know, our region is represented so well by those visual elements and it's so important to us. And with that partnership that we have some photography and you all have a ton of photography that we're able to share that and have that consistent message. So, the Northern Virginia campaign, many of you all are familiar that we launched that in April and June. This was actually a five hundred thousand dollar campaign, uh, that was made possible through the ARPA funds. Uh, what's unique about this is this was the first time that we've ever done a total in-house campaign, all the way from created to the implementation. So, um, this was a takeoff of the Metro Mountain Adventure and that, that there's still adventure out there. We did preliminary research on this, so you'll see specifically the target markets that we hit. And looking at this, we did a takeover and I'm going to go through this really kind of quickly. Um, and I can definitely give you more information if you want it, but this was, I really want to get to kind of the meat of, of, of what we have for you. So, we did a Dulles Metro takeover. So, again, this was the metro, but of course, that's attached to the airport. So, you can see some items here as well as the Ashburn Metro. So, that's the new silver line that goes all the way to, uh, Northern Virginia. We had digital live boards in all of the metro stations. We were on the side and the back of buses. And then we even did an email campaign that went out to a million people. Um, showing some statistics on this, you'll see, uh, that we had over two hundred fifty-eight thousand people open this, um, which again is over twenty-five percent, which is, is huge. And we had twenty-three thousand people actually click through the website. We also included in here with our partnership, um, with the Roanoke Regional Partnership in trying to drive people, um, to the, uh, get to know NOC page as well as for their job listings that John Hall mentioned earlier. So, it was great to see, to do that partnership as well as to see, um, some of the, the click-throughs that we're going through there. And so, as, as we've mentioned, we're really looking forward, we're working together with the Roanoke Regional Partnership as well as the Roanoke Blacksburg Technology Group and seeing how we can do place marketing and we have a consistent message that we're getting outside of the area, bringing them in, not only for those visitors, but for talent acquisition and for economic development. Some other items, um, going through it quickly are Facebook, Instagram, Spotify, YouTube, Connect TV or streaming TV. We have in-market activations, uh, with our introduction of our new gravel adventure guide. Uh, we actually had a ride that was in Northern Virginia and then showcased the guide. And then, uh, actually, next week, we're going to be having another activation at a Nationals game, which will have meeting planners, sports planners and travel writers. So, what is this created? Just April first through June fifteenth, so two and a half months. We already saw sixty-nine percent increase just in this specific market, uh, focusing on really that paid social, organic pay-per-click and direct traffic. So, we know our ads are working, but the bottom line is are people coming? So, from Zartico, we're able to see that just in two months, and again, these numbers are going to continue to go up, we had a ten percent increase just in this demographic or just in this market, as well as a ten point three increase in spending. So, what does this mean? So, Zartico is a new software that we have and we're able to really see where people are going and how they're spending their money. So, let's look at this for Franklin County specifically, um, over the past twelve months. So, you can see in here on the city of Roanoke is getting, uh, the majority of it, but then followed by Roanoke County and Franklin County. So, eighteen point five percent, again, this is a sample size, that we're able to see come into market. Where are they coming from? Again, in blue, you can see the visitation, which is Washington DC, but the red is representing that spend, right? So, we're going to continue to watch that and look at how we can get those markets here, but how we can get them to ultimately spend more money. Visitor spending is on, uh, food and gas and retail and accommodations. So, what's interesting is we were diving into this information. Franklin County was a little bit different. And again, I think it has to do with the Airbnbs or the short-term rentals. The food was mostly grocery stores. And so, how can we look at that and how can we, you know, slant or adjust our advertising so that more people are going to the restaurants that are here too? So, it's a combination of everything, but that was one thing that stood out. And then as Landon mentioned, as it relates to spending, short-term rental, you're actually booking that at your resident opposed to spending it here when you're at a hotel. So, that's why that's number is, is lower, but we're going to look at that a little bit further. So, accommodations, the spend, the average spend is five hundred and twenty-six. Again, that's going to include your hotels that you have, including Rocky Mount. Um, it's going to include like Bernard's Landing, your resort, as well as, um, your bed and breakfast ends. And then you can see with your food and attractions and, and further down. And then outdoor recreation is where we're seeing where are people going. And outdoor recreation far exceeds everything in this. So, we wanted to drill, again, I can continue to drill down into this information. And just looking at this, we can see that Smith Mountain Lake is leading that, followed by Grassy Hill Natural Preserve by the Franklin County Recreation Park, Wade Park and Philpot Lake. Okay, let's go one more step. So, let's break it out by visitor compared to your residents. So, when you're looking at this, we can see that your visitors, or actually your residents, you see a high percentage at Philpot. You can kind of look at that with the green there. And then for visitors, your number one is Chaos Mountain or Chaos Knob Overlook. So, and then kind of filtering into that. So, again, what we love about this information is not only can we see exactly what's happening, but how can we take this information and be smarter about our marketing and kind of pivot on what that messaging is? So, all of this is then complemented by public relations. So, I'd like to have Catherine Lucas come up. Uh, she is our Director of Public Relations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Deborah, and thank you all for the opportunity to present here today. So, public relations is a arm of the marketing work that we do. It is a little different than traditional marketing in that it is defined as earned media. So, these articles that you see in Southern Living or the Washington Post about what a great place this is to visit, those aren't, um, coincidence. They weren't just randomly purchased. Um, they are the result of, um, a long period of relationship building and targeted pitches to media. So, we like to use the metaphor of planting a seed for how this process works. There are a couple of different ways to plant that seed, one of them being a feeder market visit. So, that's where we go and we meet the writers where they work and live. A feeder market typically being a top visitation area for us. So, DC is an area that I've done several feeder market visits. We can bring them in for an individual media tour, or we can bring them in for a group media tour. Like, um, just at the end of April, we brought in nine travel writers, um, took them to all five jurisdictions, had a great little afternoon in Rocky Mount with Twin Creeks Distillery. So, once we have planted that seed, we continue to nurture it, give media, um, information, tell them what's new, send them pictures, just to continue to follow up, nurture that relationship, um, and stay top of mind for them. The articles can take weeks, months, and sometimes, as you'll see, um, on a few slides, a few years, um, to produce. So, we do have to be patient. This is an example of an article that we generated for a national parks traveler. This was written by a writer who traveled from Toronto, Canada, to come and visit Virginia's Blue Ridge. I had a virtual, um, desk side with her this past fall. She, I told her about all of our wonderful national parks, um, in Virginia's Blue Ridge. She was fascinated by Booker T. Washington, came in, did a visit. And then a couple of months after the visit, we ended up with this wonderful article that we were then able to promote on Facebook to our feeder markets as well. Here is an example of the benefit of going up on one of those feeder market visits, meeting media where they are, where they live. Um, did two broadcast segments that aired on ABC Seven's Good Morning Washington in DC. Both segments featured partners from Franklin County, including Smith Mountain Lake and Twin River Outfitters. Twin River Outfitters. And then this was a very exciting piece of coverage that public relations generated. We had an eight-page spread and a recent addition of Virginia Living Magazine. We hosted this author over six months before the piece came out, although his first visit to the region was actually in July of 2021. But there's so much to do here, he wanted to get to see more, get to see beyond Roanoke, so we brought him back in. And as you'll see here, this is just one page of the eight-page spread, Smith Mountain Lake was featured. All right, and here's an example of something that took a little bit more time to come to fruition. Back in 2021, we connected with the producer of this Norfolk PB at Norfolk is another feeder market for us. This Norfolk PBS program called Virginia Found featured Virginia's Blue Ridge. Again, I promised I'm going to talk about more partners than just Smith Mountain Lake and Twin Creeks Distillery, but those were two businesses that were featured in this piece. Northern Virginia Magazine, this is a publication that, as Deborah mentioned earlier, big feeder market for us, lots of our visitors come here, they are aware of Smith Mountain Lake, so it was wonderful that we were, just last week, placed in this article about wonderful lakes to escape to in Virginia. Both Philpot and Smith Mountain Lake were included. Virginia Tourism Corporation, they have a travel blog that is read by, again, lots of people in our feeder markets, the large cities in Virginia and North Carolina. Rocky Mount was featured as a vibrant Virginia town that people want to visit again and again. You'll see that. In addition to some of our food and beverage offerings, they also talk about the arts and culture with the Crooked Road and the Harvester. And here are some examples of media that we bring into the destination. As I mentioned, a lot of times that coverage comes later, months later, but we do get the benefit of having real-time social media coverage with a lot of these writers. This writer, Jo, visited just last month. As you can see, she got some really great engagement on her social media posts, had a wonderful night spent at the Clayborne Bed and Breakfast, and then got to see a lot of other partners. Very much looking forward to when the articles come out on that. And I'm not going to run down this list, but this sort of just shows, these are the writers that we hosted on that group media tour this past spring. Strategically made sure to invite a few of them from the DMV area because we know that those are audiences that are very likely to come and visit us. Every single writer that came down for that tour has coverage planned, has already, or has potentially already given us coverage, and Franklin County is very much a part of those coverage plans. Just down here at the bottom, you'll see Columbia Living Magazine did feature Franklin County in that multi-page July-August spread. So very excited, I'll share that when we get a print copy of that. And now I'm going to hand it over to our Director of Sports and Sales, John Oney.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. I think the last time I met and saw you all, I was wearing a sun hat, shorts, and I probably had suntan lotion all over my face because we were in the middle of a race. So appreciate the opportunity to speak today. Really just wanted to run down and start with the VBR Sports Council. Everything we do in VBR Sports is centered around prospecting, recruiting, and supporting local events, sporting events that generate overnight stays and economic impact. So that is all we do in VBR Sports. And so part of being able to do that is having a fantastic VBR Sports Council, and you'll notice Paul Chapman, Director of Park and Rec, and his staff, Matt Ross, is on that board. So we meet quarterly, sometimes five times a year, if, depending on schedules, and we have a discussion about how do we recruit, what do we recruit regionally, and opportunities in front of us to do more of that. So we've got a great, a great agenda for an upcoming meeting in August. I think it's August 11th where we'll be talking with representatives from USA BMX, and they are interested in, in building a BMX track in one of the regions. So more to come on that. I know we'll report back to that, and Matt, Paul, and Matt are on that call, as well as Director of Tourism, Kevin Tosh. So place marketing targets for us sports-wise, you know, it's not a secret, we like to go after non-traditional sports, fishing tournaments, obviously disc golf's a hot topic, mountain biking, BMX cycling, things like that. So we hosted a little race a couple of weeks ago, it's probably about a month ago. Show of hands, who all had a chance to come out and see the race? Fantastic. It was, it was, it was an undertaking for sure, and it was a huge success. And before I get too far down in the weeds of this, just wanted to say thank you on behalf of VBR Sports and VBR Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge in saying yes to our, our ask. What Franklin County did, coming in and hosting the road races, really is what it takes to be on a national level hosting events like that. And this was a regional event. This event was hosted last year in Bodotot County, the city of Roanoke, and, and this year, we had to kind of pivot a little bit, but honestly, it was, it was a great pivot, and I'm so happy that Franklin County was able to say yes. And kudos to your staffs. If it weren't for them, none of this happens. So I saw some staff members here from Public Safety, Billy and his crew were phenomenal. I can't tell you how much support we all had, and obviously County Administrator Chris had a huge part of that, so appreciate that. So just a quick recap of the race. Obviously, road races were conducted here, it was a two-day road race here in Franklin County. Overall, we had 975 total registrations that represented 45 states. 397 athletes participated in road race days, 3,000-plus run nights for the region, $1.3 million in direct spending, and countless traditional and social media posts that were out there. So we got a lot of looks after this event. And there's not many destinations that can pull something like this off, especially being very successful for two years. And so I think the future is bright for us, and Landon's going to talk about some of that, that future and that brightness here in a second, but just wanted to say thank you again for your support. Talking about, you know, welcoming nature of Franklin County, I thought, you know, if you look around this race, there's a lot of signage that your staff took it upon themselves to make sure that they rolled out the red carpet for these athletes. I didn't get a picture of it, but I saw a digital reader board right outside County Administration coming in on one of the days, and I was like, what? That is, that is unbelievable. But it's little things like that that go a long way in, in, in people remembering where they were and what they did there. So appreciate that. Community involvement. As you can see, I think the community really rallied around this event. You know, you've got a happy family that was out on the road race. If you look closely, you see what those signs said, I'm not going to read it.
That is so funny.
But we appreciate their enthusiasm. If you pan back from that picture, they had their tent out there and they had coolers, and it was, it was an all-day affair for them. So those are the types of things I love to see. You know, and the tractor driver, I'm not sure he had much of a personality, but look at him. I mean, he was, he was ecstatic about this race, so.
He has plenty of personality. Great guy.
A couple more shots of the race pick, of the race itself. You know, it means a lot to these athletes, they're coming from all across the country. I saw a lot of hugs, I saw a lot of tears, you know, and, and that all happened in our region, and I think that's, collectively, we need to be proud of that. So what's next? You know, we can't, we can't host national championships every year. Well, maybe we can, but.
Why?
But, 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 we'll talk about that. But what we can do is, is prospect some new opportunities for Franklin County, and these are just a couple of things that I put together that, these are not just a result of the last few, few months of, of prospecting. These are, these are relationship builders. You, you need to have relationships with these folks in order for them to have some confidence in you as a region and confidence in your park and rec. And what you did with USA Cycling, and what we've done with Ironman, and, and what the Regional Partnership has done with the Blue Ridge Marathon, tells the story that this region can host national championships. I, I feel confident talking to any rights holders, any governing, national governing body that's a fit for us, that we can do what we need to do when it comes to hosting events. So Fishers of Men is something that we're working on for Smith Mountain Lake, there's two events there, working with Kevin Tosh on that as well. American Jet Sport Association Race, we're pinned down some dates for June, June 6th through 9th of 2024. The King Cat Tournament Trail Series, so you get some fishing and jet ski in here. And then obviously, a new one that just kind of popped up that, I think, I was a little late for the meeting, but I heard some, some rumblings that we might have a new disc golf course, so that's kind of cool. But the 2025 PDGA Amateur Disc Golf World Championships, that is an infancy stage. We have not dug too deep on this, we're just starting to explore this, but I thought that, that should be on this slide, just to kind of let you know of the variety of events that we can host here in Franklin County. Sports tourism, growth opportunities. It begins and ends with our relationship with Parks and Rec and, and your Director of Tourism. So we're going to continue that collaboration. Just so happens, Paul's a pretty nice guy, and so I look forward to working with him and his team a little bit more on some new opportunities, including gravel, gravel cycling, again, disc golf, some archery, and some other outdoor recreation, recreational events that really showcase what Franklin County's about. Explore additional ways to utilize Wade Park. I thought that was a compelling slide that, that Deborah just threw up there. I think Wade was third or fourth on the list. Let's get that up a little bit. I, you know, let's see if we can bump that up a little bit as a destination. Anything to produce overnight stays, increase the quality of life for residents, and promote the region. Prospecting and recruiting together gives us a competitive advantage over other destinations. So regardless of what sport we're going after, when we're going after it, we need the help of our partners. I think together it makes sense, so there are opportunities for us to, to go to shows together, to meet rights holders together, to talk to sports organizers together, whether it's in person or Zoom, whatever it is. These rights holders and sports folks need to see that collaboration and again, feel that trust to want to do business in your region. And then a, a big one is partnering with Fairham College. I think that's, that's an untapped resource that, that we need to continue our relationship with, and I'm pretty excited about that. Again, just some sales recruitment opportunities that we've got. We do about five big shows a year. Next one's coming up in Minneapolis for Connect, and, and most of these shows that we pick are appointment shows. So these are one-on-one appointments where you have seven minutes to, it's kind of like speed dating, you have seven minutes to kind of pitch your product and, and all, and then you follow up after the show and kind of drill things down and see if it's a good fit. So good opportunities there. All right, so that's all I have. I'd like to bring Landon back up.
Thank you, John, Deborah, Catherine. Well, the word's already out. I feel if y'all got the run at times. You know, the way my dad raised me says it never hurts to ask, and so the only thing they can do is just tell you no. So I have to hand it to Chris when I called him up and I said, hey, Brendan Quirk with USA Cycling wants to meet with us. And he came up to Roanoke, comes on a Saturday during the amateur race, and he said he li, he likes his place. And so at this point, they're wanting to move their road and gravel headquarters from Colorado Springs to here in Virginia's Blue Ridge. They want us to host the Pro-Am Championship for, for five years, starting next year through 2028. That's going to include, for the United States, Olympic trials for Paris in 2024, and in all likelihood, Olympic trials for Los Angeles in 2028 here. In addition to that, they have also asked us to take on their gravel championship, which is ideal for Franklin County, with all the great gravel trails that you've got here. That is a more recent championship that they've started, but they expect to have about 2,000 people come in for that. And so anyway, all of this, it's having headquarters and training, they're going to have clinics. The US athletes will be training for Tour de France here as part of the clinic that they, that they do. So we'll be the center for cycling in the United States in so many ways. So we need $10 million. So we went ahead and asked, and we sent it to the governor. I know it was on the governor's desk, it was on the bottom of his stack, and now it's at the top of his stack, and now I know it's now left the governor's desk. And while I was sitting here, I just got an email to meet with the Secretary of Commerce and Trade on Thursday about this. And I was also told to meet with the Secretary of Avenue that, earlier that morning. So I don't know what that means, but you know, if you don't ask, you're not going to get it. And they did the analysis and said that it would produce directly $11 million. So if that tells me, if you can spend 10 and make 11, good deal. And it's not just for us, it's for Virginia. We're doing this for Virginia. It's going to, and, and the other thing too, that I think, what started all this is that we met with Attorney General Jason Morales in my conference room when he was in Roanoke. And I told him about this, he said, put together a white paper, which we did, and it's in your packet here, that it details what the costs are and that kind of thing. So he said, put it together and I'll put it on the governor's desk, and he did. So we'll see what happens on Thursday. But I had to call Chris and say, are you sure you want to do this? I called the City Manager of Roanoke, City Manager of Salem, I said, are y'all sure? Roanoke County Administrator, Bodotot County Administrator, this is going to be a heavy lift, but it's going to be, put us on the map. Also for economic development, because USA Cycling has offered us the athlete headquarters in Paris to do economic development next year. If we want to come to Paris, start marketing to the EU and to companies in the EU for outdoor products. That has been offered to us. So that's all we have to share. I think it's some good news, but we'd like to hear what you've got to say about how we can help things, things here in Franklin County be better, because that's what we want to do.
Are there field trips involved to Paris?
There could very well be.
Just saying.
Stay tuned.
Well, first of all, thank you. I love Sox, Chapstick, and Cup, so you.
Very good.
But it's my fourth year on the board, I love it when you guys come here. I love what you have to say. I love what you guys do. I would, I would put you guys up against anybody in this country for what you guys do. The contractors and citizens of this county, for example, what you're doing, the trickle-down effect of what you guys are doing, me being a contractor, you guys are bringing people that buy homes that generate all this revenue in our county. And I would like to see a slide on how, that would be great to see that effect on specifically the contractors. The business that you guys bring in with how you advertise Smith Mountain Lake, it's tremendous. I think you guys would be shocked at the amount of money from the people that you're bringing into our lake and how, how many dollars that, that turns into. I love you guys, I think you guys do a phenomenal job. As far as the return on investment, I don't, I mean, you guys are it for economic development. I think you guys do a great job. I'm super excited about everything you guys have planned. I made a little note, you guys are talking about trying to figure out like the money spent, like in grocery stores versus restaurants. It's easy, we just don't have enough restaurants.
Yeah.
I think that's the answer, so I wouldn't beat yourself up too much over that. Your sports guy, I can't remember his name.
Yeah, John Oney?
Uh, the, the fishing tournaments, I'm an avid fisherman, and there's, there's tournaments on our lake every week. You just named a couple of them, but you know, the fishing tournaments would be huge. It'd be awesome if you could get a big one here, get some of the pros to come in, that would be really cool. And I think, you know, without mentioning Paul Chapman, I think Paul Chapman is a vital key in all his staff and what you guys are doing, and we can't forget about him and his staff because they are top-notch. And thank you, thank you, thank you for everything you do for Franklin County. I really appreciate you guys.
It's an honor, thank you.
Anyone else?
When can you come back and give us an update? We're excited.
That's a, that's a good question. I'm nervous about Thursday.
Of course.
But it's, but the Regional Partnership was with us on, on putting this proposal together, and, and their statistical brain and what John and his people do is really critical for what we do. And I'll tell you, there's more coming down the pathway, because what we've learned is that place marketing also gets people here to look at us as a place for a job, or, and, and then also investment. So I'll reemphasize, we're working together closer than we've ever worked before, and I really appreciate not only what goes on among the staff here in Franklin County, but just the regional partnerships that we have.
I'm saving Mr. Thompson for last, for his comments, so I'm going to go to this side. Tommy?
Oh, I was involved with the bike race. I didn't, I wasn't on one, you know.
I'm glad you caught that.
Matter of fact, I didn't even get up on one of the warm-up bikes, I couldn't do that. But no, I was there for one of the races, and I thoroughly enjoyed it.
Them signs and little girls was holding up.
Well, big thing, big thing, the big thing, they have a suit fit me. But no, I was just tickled to death. I mean, what you all do, what you all do for Franklin County is fantastic. And it it is, I can't give you enough accolades to tell you how good and much we appreciate what you all do. And in fairness and say it so, I think our county staff is super.
Yes, they are.
They're super.
They're a pleasure.
I'm not going to mention all of them, but you know, they knew who I'm talking about, because I thanked them that day. And Paul, I'm not going to say your name, no, I'm not, but anyway. But Kevin, I'm not going to say yours either, so don't don't say nothing. But the rest of you, I mean, I just think it's so great, and I never got the first complaint. You know what I mean, you had the road closed and this, that, and the other. The people in this county came out and supported it, and I was very well pleased. And you know, but I still don't think I lose enough weight to get in them pants, I really don't. But anyway, thank y'all.
We're honored, thank you.
Thank y'all so much for what you do.
Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell, you have anything?
I'm good.
All right, I'm going to come back to you, Mr. Thompson.
I don't have any questions, I just got a comment to make for all of the presentations today. I have been in this this area my whole life. I've worked in Roanoke, Benton, Franklin County. And I have seen over the years that there is a lot of services that are duplicated. And the reason that they're duplicated is because nobody wants to work together. And these presentations that we've had today to me have been a wealth of information. And I think that if we can take time out, I have pushed for staff to have these kinds of updates constantly from our partners, because that's how we can learn, is if we listen and take advantages of your expertise. And I want to say more to this, I think all of our partners, Mr. Holmes, Mr. Hall, Mr. Howard, are all valuable. I have think they have brought wealth that we won't, we don't know about to this table. And it would behoove all of us to work together. And I want to encourage staff, Chris, I'd like to see these come back. I would like to see these come back, and I would like to have time to sit down and to talk that we can take advantage of their expertise and explain to us what we're doing right and what we're doing wrong. Now, if anybody here thinks we're not doing something wrong, we are, but we're doing stuff right too. And we got to start working together and listening to these people, because I can see where there is value here and money here that will come to us that outsiders will be paying, not our taxpayers, and it'll take a load off of our taxpayers. And it would behoove us to listen to these experts, and that's what I wanted to say. I have said here and soaked this up like a sponge from all three of our partners. The wealth of information is is astronomical with this marketing, this is what they've done. This is what they've done, and if and if we would listen to what they've got to say, everybody, I think it would benefit our county greatly. And my thing is, is I thank you all for coming, I thank you for your services, and I don't think that there's been a dime wasted in anything that Franklin County has done for these organizations, not one dime.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you all, all three of you, for coming and your time and what you have taught us. I only hope that we can learn more to put Franklin County forth. I would like to see, I'm telling you straight up, you know, I know we've got our heritage here with farming, and I know the bootleg, and I know all of that stuff, but there's other resources here that we've not tapped. And maybe it's because it's our fault, because we're not listening to the experts, what they're telling us. You know, we're taking it and we're, well, this is mine, this is it, this is it. And we need to listen to what's going on. That's why we belong to these groups and these organizations. And I want to thank you all for what you've brought to the table today and for the enlightenment that you have given me, anyway. I'll put it that way. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Howard, I would like to echo what Mr. Thompson just said in thanking you and the other partners that came today for all the work you do for us. And as I mentioned, the last time we met over to Explore Park, this is exciting stuff here. We have a good product in Franklin County and our this region, and we just want to thank you for helping us sell that product. And with all of us working together, it, you know, we we can achieve some wonderful things. You know, I was able to go over to Wade Park for a couple of days of the bike races, and it was phenomenal speaking to the competitors, the competitors' families. I had one father tell me they'd been to 16 events so far this year, and the accommodations and everything that they experienced here was far better than anywhere they'd been in the entire country. That that's that's exciting. And and just want to say thank you to you, your staff, Roanoke partners, and just thank you for for being here and supporting us here in Franklin County. And I agree with Mr. Thompson, we need to get together more often, we need to have these strategy sessions. We need to sit down, figure out what we're doing right, what we're doing wrong, and and learn from it, improve on it, and move forward. And with that said, if nobody else has anything, we're we're going to take a break, and we're going to reconvene back at B-75. Again, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I move to certify that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session to which this certification applies, and only such business matters as were identified in the motion by which this closed session was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting to which this certification applies.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, we take a roll call.
Supervisor Ronnie Thompson?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Nick Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Tommy Cundiff?
Yes.
Supervisor Lori Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Mike Carter's absent for the vote. Chairman Tatum?
Yes.
All right. For appointments, I don't think anyone had any appointments, so we'll move right along. Steve Sandy, Andy Pendleton, you're first up.
Yes, I'm going to let our Fire Marshal, Andy Pendleton, he's going to present, he's got a PowerPoint to present. I think on both both public hearings, actually, but but we'll do them separately, the the two public hearings.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Members of the Board, thank you for hearing me out today. So today, what I'm coming to to bring forward to you is some permit fees. It's a request from the Fire Marshal's office, and today I'll explain exactly what we're going through here. In 1988, the Board adopted the Statewide Fire Prevention Code and 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 its enforcement of that code also. So in the Statewide Fire Prevention Code in Section 107, it states operational permits may be required by the fire official as permitted under the Statewide Fire Prevention Code in accordance with Table 102.107.2, excuse me. There's about 50 different permits that can be required by the fire official. Now, with that, operational permits may be required by the fire official as permitted under the fire code in accordance with Table 107.2, except that the fire official shall require permits for manufacturing, storage, handling, use, and the sale of explosives. So what what permits do we currently require? So currently, the Fire Marshal's Office requires for manufacturing explosives, storage of explosives, handling use of explosives, and sale of explosives. Now, in explosives, remember that constitutes fireworks also. There's no fee attached to these permits. What this requires us is we have to obtain the permit, we have to go out and check and make sure they're meeting everything that constitutes with the Statewide Fire Prevention Code, such as like fireworks will be fallout and the distances, blasting, make sure that the performing blasting is is permitted. And then also the storage of magazines, make sure it's up to what the fire code says. So we actually have to make trips out and to check this. That is the only permits that technically we require at this point. There are several other things that I, as the Fire Marshal and my deputy Fire Marshal, we do have to perform. Mobile food trucks have to be inspected so they can get their health department license by the Fire Marshal's office, because they do have vent hoods in it which produces grease-laden vapors. Social services, any type of daycare, anything that requires a social service permit through the state, we have to go do a fire inspectional, so we're actually having to go do these things, regardless if we have the permit or not. So with these permits, in accordance with 2798 of the Code of Virginia, fees may be levied by the local governing body in order to defray the cost of enforcement and appeals under the Statewide Fire Prevention Code. A schedule of such cost should be adopted by the local governing body and a local ordinance. So that's why we're here today, is to actually assess a fee for some of these permits if if you see fit to do so. And this fee is not to make money, it's just to defray costs, because we have to go out. It's costing taxpayer money for fuel and actually to send people out to do this. These these permits are for life safety, it's not that we're nitpicking people, it's life safety things. There's a lot of things in Franklin County that that people don't realize. Once you get a your building permit, we haven't, we haven't adopted the maintenance code. So once the CO is given, there's nobody else that goes back and checks unless it's under the Fire Marshal's office to go check for maintenance, such as your exit signs, your exit lighting, your assemblies and stuff like that. Some other jurisdictions with permit fees is Campbell County, Henry County, Pitt County, Roanoke City, Roanoke County. There's multiple other jurisdictions in the state of Virginia that have permits and permit fees. So like Patrick County, they do not have a Fire Marshal, so what do they do? The state Fire Marshal's office has to come in, and in the fire code, their fees are scheduled out in those in the fire code. So here's the permits that we're requesting fees for. Amusement building, which would be like a fun house or something at Halloween. An assembly, which can constitute anything with 50 or more people in a gathering. And there's there's several different types of assemblies. Blasting, commercial burning, commercial cooking. The commercial cooking would cover, a restaurant is technically a an assembly, unless it's less than 50 people. So the commercial cooking would catch those ones that don't fall under assembly, because they're considered a business if it's if their occupancy is less than 50. Firework aerial displays, firework sales, hazardous materials, that is, storage for hazardous materials, LP gas field stations, mobile food trucks, social services, and then tire storage, such as what you already have in ordinance for, how many tires you can have in Franklin County, places like that, for tire rebuild and shredded, even Omni Source where they keep such and stuff with all those products. So the fee we would request would be $75 for the permit. This is an annual fee, except for the blasting, which is good for 30 days, and the commercial burning would be per site. And then for $50 for any place of worship that falls under the assembly. If we go perform a routine fire inspection, which if a permit is requested and granted, a routine fire inspection will be done annually. We go, if we find fire code violations, we actually have to return, we give them 30 days to fix those violations, and we'll return, and then we'll make sure that those violations are corrected. If and there's, we're not asking for a fee to go back and check. If we have to go back a third time, we are asking for a $75 fee on the third time to return. So how are you going to obtain this permit? They'll be obtained online or at the Public Safety Administrative Office, that's how you get the permit. Payments and records will be maintained by Public Safety Admin, and fees will be utilized to defray the cost to the Fire Marshal's office. Town of Rocky Mountain, Boone's Mill, permits will be required in the Town of Rocky Mountain, providing that the town does not require the same permit. I'm not going to, we're not going to double up on people that fireworks is the only permit right now that is required by the town Fire Marshal. And the town, I spoke with Ed Hodges, the town Fire Marshal, and he's also agreed to assist with these inspections inside the Town of Rocky Mountain. If if passed, we want to put this off until January 1st for this is required, to give us to give time to educate the public of what we're requesting and what we're wanting to do. Do you have any questions?
I'm I'm going to start, usually I defer to my fellow Board members, but I have one quick question you can answer. You've put churches in here under assembly, are we looking at charging the requiring every church in Franklin County to get a permit?
Per assembly, yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Yes, sir.
Would you mind going back and showing me who you're going to, what businesses or whatever you're going to charge?
The requested permit, sir.
Hang on, hang on a second. All right, the other one, you had a continued one. Okay, hold on a second. All right, now, when you're talking about social services, what are you talking about?
Daycares, they're required to have a be permitted through the social services, and we we're required to go provide a fire inspection to them annually so they can obtain their social services.
Talking about childcare, daycare, stuff like that?
Yes, sir.
Not our social services system?
I'm sorry, sir.
Not our social services system?
No, sir, no, sir, it's the daycares.
All right, the mobile food truck, how does that fall under that permit?
Fire Marshal's Office is required to do inspections on food trucks, because they do have vent hoods in them, and it's required by the health.
Suppressing system?
Yes, sir, and the Health Department will not issue their health permit to operate without a fire inspection.
Okay. All right, back up to that other one, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Okay, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for doing that.
Ms. Smith?
Yes, thank you for your report. First of all, I do have a question, I'll ask my question. Do you have an idea of what your expenses are in in the associated visits that you all have to make, whereas right now you're not charging a fee for certain activities? Do you have any idea what that is actually costing the county to do where there are no fees?
No, ma'am, because we're not to, no, ma'am, I don't for what you're asking. Because we are not at this time, I'm not inspecting all of this at this time, so I do not have a number for you for this cost.
And I just would like to make a comment mainly for my colleagues. I do not support charging our churches. I just don't.
I can't either.
I don't support that, so.
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. Well, I'll tell it right now, I'm not going to support charging a church.
Understood, sir.
That's, I might comment then, we won't have to do it anymore.
Ronnie?
Sandy, right now, you're performing all these, just we're not charging anything for them, correct?
Yes, sir.
So we're trying to recuperate some cost of doing business, basically?
Yes, sir.
And you know, Andy has a very important job, and one of the most important jobs he has is fire prevention. And all these permits are basically lead up to fire prevention, correct?
Yes, sir.
So as a fellow firefighter, I appreciate you taking the time to put this together to try to keep your firefighters safe in the county, my firefighters included, so if it's the Board's pleasure to to not have it, the churches included, which we still have to do the inspections, I I do think we need to support our Fire Marshal, because they do, Fire Marshal Office does provide a great service to this county, and I support our Fire Marshal. And I support our Fire Marshal.
What I said earlier, my question was asking about the churches. I support all of these because you're already doing them. And this is a way, I don't think that it's a punitive charge to these organizations, and it's helping to defer some of the expenses, but I will not support charging the churches. You know, we still need to do those services, but that's a service that the county can provide for the churches free of charge, in my opinion. But I support the rest of it. I think that, you know, you're going out, you're spending time and resources to go out to assure the safety, and you're a valuable resource for these businesses that call you to go out because you provide a fresh set of eyes, a trained set of eyes looking at a situation to see a problem that the property owner might look at a thousand times and never realize, oops, you know, I could have burnt the whole place down. So I think you provide a valuable service to the county. I do support this with the exception of not the churches. Anyone else?
I'm all for it minus the churches.
All right.
Half of me and my kids are setting off their sparklers and stuff in the driveway though.
Well, I agree with you. I won't, I won't support churches, churches, no, no. Anything but churches.
Anything else before we go to public comment?
Thank you, Andy.
All right, Madam Clerk, do we have, and we'll open the floor to public comment on this issue at this time. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
No Chairman, I have no speakers for this item.
Okay, is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak in regard to the fees as proposed by our Fire Marshal? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing to this. Your pleasure.
We need a motion. I make a motion that this be approved as presented with the exception of the churches.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve this as presented with the exception of the churches. Any further discussion before we take a final vote?
We're just having one, Mr. Chairman, just for clarification. If the board would like to look at an implementation date with that, or certainly if it's effective immediately, or in, we recently updated some fees and gave a couple of months to advertise that.
As presented.
He said January first.
As presented.
Yes sir.
Any other discussion before we take a final vote? Madam Clerk, will you take a roll call please?
Supervisor Lori Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronnie Thompson?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Nick Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Tommy Cundiff?
Yes.
Supervisor Mike Carter is absent for the vote. Chairman Tatum?
Yes. All right, Mr. Sandy and Andy Pendleton.
Yep, I'll call Andy back up, but this is another small set of permits that we talked about during the budget process and the public hearing about some fees that were a little outdated and ones that we wanted to look at updating. So it's just two or, it's very few, but we did advertise these as a separate public hearing because it's actually a separate section of the code. So it would be really this one, the last one was adding some new fees. This one is really amending some current fees that are already in our code.
This one doesn't have any churches in it.
Poor Andy, poor Andy. You're not going to want to come back, are you?
Ms. Chairman and Board, right now we, in the Franklin County Code, we do have some reimbursement fees for hazmat incidents or negligent or unlawful acts and for false alarms. Currently, and this was adopted in nineteen eighty-eight. How many times or how many board meetings have we been through? Fire apparatus has went up so much, it's went from five hundred thousand to eight hundred thousand. Gas has went from, you know, to five dollars a gallon or diesel. And also minimum wage has also went up. So in nineteen eighty-eight, for hazardous material incidents and negligent acts, anything above a normal response, they would charge ten dollars an hour per person or seventy-five dollars an hour per piece of equipment. And when I say this is just not, hey, we get the initial call, one or two, the normal response goes, that's not, that's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about major incidents, anything above and beyond just a normal response. So, and also for the firearms. We do, every day in my office, me and Alan keep track of all the firearms or false alarms that come to the county. You wouldn't believe how many false alarms Franklin County has. So each time we do have a false alarm, every time that truck cranks, it costs the county something. And right now, it's, you get two false alarms for free and the third one, then it's a seventy-five dollar charge and seventy-five dollars thereafter. So, but we have found some places, they would rather pay the seventy-five dollars than get their alarm fixed. Well, that's up to them. But what we're asking for now is just requesting the changes. We want, we would like to change the ten dollars per hour to twenty-five dollars per hour to come up to current times. Seventy-five dollars for equipment hour to two hundred and fifty dollars per equipment hour. And then subsequent alarms after the third, the first one would be seventy-five dollars, and I would ask for an escalating fee of twenty-five dollars each additional time on top of that seventy-five just to make people say, hey, it'd be better than our people have to get up at three o'clock in the morning or the volunteers have to work the next morning and have to be up to go check a building that they launched one off that nobody wants to come, the key holder don't want to respond. Questions and values?
I do have a question. On these fees, if I recollect, most homeowners insurance and business insurance, they have coverages for fire suppression, this sort of thing, that is very seldom tapped into. Is that correct?
Yes sir.
And so a lot of these fees that you're showing here, if, say for instance, business out in Faram has a fire and you have to respond, and they get some of these fees levied on them. In fact, most of the insurance will take care of these fees, but we have to have these fees in place to be able to tap into that. Sort of like the collecting for EMS transport to the hospital. A lot of your health insurance policies cover transportation to the hospital, but if you don't have a play, a plan in place, you can't collect.
Yes sir, that's correct.
Is that kind of what we're seeing here too?
Yes sir.
Okay, I just want to see if we was on similar playing field as with the EMS billing. Anyone else have any questions for Andy? Go ahead, Tom.
Now, this just covers false alarms, is I'm not correct?
This covers false alarm, sir, and also hazardous materials incidents. You've got to look at it in, it's like two different things, Mr. Cundiff. It's, the false alarms will be the... The hazardous materials incidents and the negligent acts are, you've got to look at it in one sense. That's where we're going to, that's where we're asking to change it from ten dollars an hour to seventy-five dollars an hour. And I did tell you wrong, I'm sorry, I put this in there, it's two hundred dollars an hour instead of two hundred and fifty. And then the false alarm would be, false alarms are seventy-five dollars for the third, and we're asking for to add subsequent ones after the third, it's a twenty-five dollar extra to that seventy-five.
Well, what I'm driving at is that if it is a true alarm, they don't get charged anything.
No sir, no sir, no. It's just only for false alarm.
From driving, okay, he was talking about the insurance and stuff, but I don't think insurance cover a false alarm.
No sir.
Okay, but what I'm driving at is that we're not putting it on people that actually have a true accident or a true fire or true something like that.
No sir.
This is just for false alarms.
Correct.
And I know how that goes because I know my brother David Cunnor was alive. He talked about a whole lot of false alarms.
Yes sir.
How much they had to do, and he tried to tell the people, you know, okay, we're going to start charging, but he still kept doing it. But I just want to make sure this is, this is for just a false alarm, not a true alarm.
Except for the hazardous material incident part of it.
What about hazardous material?
You got hazardous material incidents, negligent and unlawful act.
Oh negligence, yeah, yeah, I can see that, yeah, okay. All right, I just want to make, I just want that clarification, thank you.
And again, the correction is not two hundred and fifty, it's two hundred.
Two hundred.
Chairman?
Yes.
The, the false alarms, ninety-five percent of them are commercial. So we're, I don't think you're going to see us sending bills to residents.
Correct.
Correct.
Very rarely do we ever send a bill now to any resident.
I want a question.
Go ahead, Tom.
Where did you come up with these figures?
The figures in here now are in the code.
I understand that.
Yes, and then Chief, where do these?
Where did we come up with these figures to charge?
Two hundred and seventy-five dollars.
This something other counties are doing, or is this something?
Well, lots of counties do it on a different way, like the city. This was put in back in nineteen eighty-eight. And at that time, the seventy-five dollars, are you talking about the man hours at the seventy-five dollars per hour? Or equipment, is that what you're referring to?
No, I'm referring to like a seventy-five dollars per equipment hour to two hundred dollars. Ten dollars a person to twenty-five. Where did you come up with these figures? These are the exact expenses that we go through?
Well, we looked at that about what actual expenses were, what it costs to run a truck to these calls. And man hours, that's pretty much what we, if you averaged out the hour of wages, it would be a something. You know, we could certainly adjust those if needed, but we figured those were fair prices. Different prices, different locations charge different.
I'm not saying not on fire, I'm just saying I'd like to know how you come up with the figure. Thank you.
Go ahead, Lori.
Mr. Whitlow, this may be more so for you or Mr. Kerr. The proposed ordinance language talks about any of these remitted fees going directly back to the department to offset your costs. That's pretty much the fundamental reason for this. So when these monies come in and hit the general fund, there is a line in our general fund budget fees, forfeitures, et cetera, permits. Is there going to be a deliberate methodology to get these directed, redirected back to the department and not hit that general fund line item?
Great question, Ms. Smith. To answer your question, yes, I mean, it typically would go into the permits, fines and so forth. To delineate that, we'll have to set up into our accounts specifically, and I'm looking to our finance director, and our munis system who has much more experience with the munis system than I do. But it can be certainly, and remitted back from that specific line item to the respective department. That being said, it's not an enterprise fund because we don't necessarily have enterprise funds. And so we would have to be creative in how that would, if you will, get appropriated back, whether it's through a monthly appropriation or whatever the case may be. But that could be very onerous on our staff. So it's the right question to ask, and I'm passing the football to our finance director.
All I can say is if you don't have a mechanism for it, we need to strike the language.
Yes, yes.
Because I don't want that money defaulting into the
Agreed.
The general fund.
Yes, I would agree from a budgetary perspective, there's one or two ways to handle it. If we have a fee, we're typically going to load that effective and project it July first. That goes to fund typically all general fund services. We do that with all of our fees. We don't really dedicate revenue to any particular function. The only exception to that is EMS billing revenue. That goes specifically to help fund EMS services. But other than that, that's really the only revenue that's dedicated. So we would want to look at that because I don't know that, me looking at a budget, how do I ever guarantee you back to Mr. Whitlow's point about an enterprise fund? And when it's jumbled into everything else in the general fund, there's no real way to ever say it's segmented just for this particular purpose. You could, if you didn't budget for July first, wait and see what was collected. I could come back to the board for supplemental appropriations at some point during the year, allocate it to a particular line item. That would be an option, but logistically, that would be about the only way I would know of short of segmenting and setting up a new fund. It'll be just for the Fire Marshal's Office or Prevention. So those particular items would be something to look at.
Well, my, Mr. Chairman, if we are not sure about the treatment of the revenue from this and the language is in the proposed ordinance, whenever you're ready, I'm not so sure we shouldn't table this. I don't know.
Anyone else have any questions for Billy or Andy or Brian?
So Ms. Smith, just to clear something up, right now, we're already doing these fees, and the bill is generated from our office. We generate the invoice out and it has payable back to our office. So the funds coming in never go to the Finance Department, they comes back to us. And then the ones for the false alarms are then deposited with our deposits to the Treasury Department into the fuel account. And the ones for the hazardous material response are deposited into that account. So Finance never really, I don't want to say gets involved, but it goes through the Treasurers' Office and is just put in our line item.
So you've got co-mingled funds basically then, between your permit fees and any allocations you get out of the fiscal year budget allocations for public safety?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
I can't remember, Brian, are those fees separated in the revenue treatment for public safety?
Well, so to me, if the money's going in from the Treasurers' Office, it's hitting a revenue code, but we don't budget for that then if they're billing it. Or if we do, it's budgeted on a projection and it's still not dedicated. So we'll have to trace that in. Now, some of the items that public safety bills, they do come back, and then that's reallocated back as an expenditure refund because it's not an appropriation. That's helped to defray a cost, it's a recovered cost. So that very well would be what I'm assuming is happening on some of these items since they're not touching Finance. So if that's going to be the continued path, then that would be, but I think that the way the language says is that funding stream will be dedicated. From a budgetary perspective, we can't do that. Logistically on the process, I think if that's, if public safety is collecting it, it's going to go back into their budget essentially as a recovered cost, an expenditure refund. That would be, Finance would still have to do the entry, but it wouldn't be a budgetary impact if you get what I'm saying.
Well, and we don't have to get into the weeds of your
Weeds of the logistics.
Accounting. I was just looking at the potential adoption of the ordinance language, and it's the reality that that is going to happen as such. Sounds like we're not sure.
I would be careful, and if we need to tweak the language, maybe that's a good point, that we don't dedicate any revenue for any particular purpose. I just am cautious of that because once you start that path, that gets a little bit complicated from a pure budgetary standpoint. So I, without looking at the language, that would be my only caution on how we adopt this, yes.
Thank you, Brian.
I think, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as I understand, I think in the local code as it exists, the recovery or the collection is already set aside for, you know, for the fees. I guess it's just a matter of then the appropriation or the designation of that. It is collected, as Mr. Carter mentioned, for recovered costs, and I think that's allowed by local code, you know, per state code.
Right. Ronnie Mitchell?
Just a comment, as a firefighter in this county that gets woken up probably three out of seven nights a week for false alarms, I think that we need to pass this, let staff figure out how to do it because our Fire Marshal is correct in saying that there are businesses that neglect their systems, and it's frustrating, to say the least, to run them call after call after call. And it's not just a few, it's a lot. So Fire Marshal doesn't come in here and ask us for too much, so I feel like we need to support him tonight and get this moving so he can get the ball rolling.
Anyone else have anything before we go to open public comment? Okay, I'll open the floor for public comments this time. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
No, Mr. Chairman, I have no speakers for this item.
Okay, is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak in regard to these fee increases for public safety? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public comment portion. Board, what's your pleasure?
I'll offer a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I make a motion to approve the adoption of the attached ordinance, amending Sections eight dash eight-one, eight dash eight-two, eight dash eight-three of the Franklin County Code to increase the current cost recovery fees for hazardous materials, negligent, unlawful acts, and fire, false fire alarms to help defray the costs incurred by the county with subject ordinance language to be reviewed and brought back to the Board of Supervisors at a later date.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Go ahead, Steve.
If I could, if I could just clarify, I think the language that you're speaking of is, it's already in the code. And so we didn't advertise to change anything else except the dollar amount of those fees.
Okay.
So if we, if we wanna go back and look at any of that other language, I think we, we would need to advertise those changes specifically, so.
Gotcha.
So the language you were speaking of is actually already in the ordinance, uh, that's the way it reads currently in the ordinance. Does that make sense? The, the only items we were changing was actually the dollar amounts, so.
The question still is there, then?
Yeah, I'm just, my point is, I think we'd have to advertise again separately, I think, for a, a different set of changes to that code, it was my only point, so.
Thank you for clarifying that, you're right. So... I can retract my motion and introduce a mo- a motion to approve, but given that we've got ordinance language that, like that, that's already in place, um, I'm not sure what we've been doing, um, with the ordinance in place and how the money's been treated, so maybe that's just something we need to take up in an ancillary fashion.
Okay, so do you wanna retract your motion?
Yes, I will retract my motion, um, and I will make the following motion to approve the adoption of the attached ordinance, amending Sections eight dash eight-one, eight dash eight-two, and eight dash eight-three of the Franklin County Code to increase the current cost recovery fees for hazardous materials, negligent unlawful acts, and false fire alarms, to help defray the costs incurred by the county.
Okay, do we have the motion, do we have a second?
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion before we take a final vote? Madam Clerk, will you take a roll call, please?
Supervisor Ronnie Thompson?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Nick Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Tommy Cundiff?
Yes.
Supervisor Lori Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Mike Carter is absent for the vote, Chairman Tatum?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I would request that we, uh, ask Mr. Whitlow to kinda look into this.
Yes.
On our behalf, uh, for any potential, uh, ordinance language changes.
Okay. All right, other matters for supervisors, I'll start over here, Nick Mitchell, you have anything?
Um, I'd like to say I met with, um, Keith Ludeman and, uh, Captain Law and, um, Mark Law down at Snow Creek yesterday, and they are extremely grateful for what we did on getting their paid staff, which is starting Friday. I've already gotten one voicemail today from a citizen, I, I guess saw him there, and I wanna thank all of y'all, and I think I can speak for the Snow Creek community, to thank y'all for what we've done to get that down there, they're extremely grateful.
Cundiff?
Well, I have a whole lot to be thankful for, uh, but I'm very thankful for this county, I'm very thankful for the staff that we have. Uh, I'm, you know, tickled at what we got accomplished, I loved that bike race, it was wonderful, the staff was wonderful, and, uh, other than that, I think things are going pretty smooth.
Ronald Mitchell?
The only thing I have for other matters is, uh, where are we at with Callaway Rescue Squad, I haven't heard anything. Uh, there, uh, I think Lieutenant showed earlier, I don't know if he was asked to be here, but he showed up wanting to know. Um, is there no open line of communication with the Callaway Res- Callaway Rescue Squad, and what we're trying to do to get their seventeen thousand five hundred dollars put back in their budget? Um, I've been monitoring my pager, they're answering calls.
Um, Mr., I, I think I can answer that, Mr. Ryan Mitchell, I think at the last meeting, there wasn't, you know, any direction, I, I guess, or full consensus from the board of, of putting the money back. I think the, the consensus at that point, or the direction at that, uh, time, was that the, um, Callaway Volunteer Rescue Squad would, would, would get with staff, and I think staff has reached out, uh, at that time. I see Mr. Ludeman, um, nodding his head in the affirmative, and I guess we're waiting for some information back, perhaps, from the Callaway Volunteer Rescue Squad?
Yes, Sir, Mr. Mitchell, we've been, uh, corresponding fairly regularly with the captain up there, Captain Deacon, and, uh, she has, uh, sent in some, uh, dates that she'd be available, and I think she's on vacation this week, I was on vacation last week, and we're working with her to see, uh, what remedies we can come up with to help them continually.
All right, I appreciate that, and the only reason I brought it up is cause, I think it's Lieutenant Messenger, I think he's lieutenant up there. Uh, he showed up after we, before we went back to B seventy-five, wanting to know what was going on, so maybe if we could just reach out to them, if Chief Ludeman's handling it, and just open up line of communication to... She's out of town, maybe, you know, get someone else there to, to talk to the members, and kinda give them an update, I would greatly appreciate that.
Yeah, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
Um?
Got two things, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to talk about. Uh, somehow or another, uh, project, Mr. Lauren Boone, uh, in, in my district, uh, he has, uh, put in an application, was to build a garage down there, and somehow or another, things got swept through the cracks. Sandy today helped him, got things on the up and up, and for that, I appreciate it, and got it back on track, this has been going on for nearly two years now. Mr. Boone is the one that we've been talking to about helping with, uh, county equipment, fire and rescue, and he's been working on them out there in the ground, laying on the ground on quilt or on a rug, in the rain and everything, and it got, it's got swept down, but, uh, I think it's on the right track. He, a couple of things were done in reverse. What my, uh, what I'm asking the board is that we, uh, get this on fast track and get it, uh, you know, in our next meeting. Get, uh, it's gotta be twenty-one days where it's gotta be advertised, and get that started, so they can get the, uh, garage built, it's already a garage there, it's just a bigger onto it. And that's what I'm asking for the board, to help get this moved, to get it on the fast track. So, everybody seems to be shaking their head okay.
Everybody nodding in agreement.
All right, and the second thing that I wanted to bring out, we have a large number of, uh, students, and there's a huge number in, uh, in my district, in the Boone District, of the German Baptists and homeschooled. And it has, uh, been brought to my attention, and it has been on my mind for a while now, that these folks are not having the homeschooled, and the ones that are going to the German Baptist School are not having the opportunities afforded to them by their tax dollars, because they're paying them at the local schools. For example, earlier today, we had the class with the FFA, and, and these folks should be offered an opportunity to be in the FFA, to be in sc- uh, sports after that and everything. And I have talked to, uh, Ms. Greer on the school board, and she was going to look into it, and I would just like for the board to be mindful of what is going on, and maybe issue, uh, to your school board member, some support. It is, it's some technicalities there. They have to be certain things, she's gonna look into it and get back with what all those technicalities were, but I think it sh- it would behoove the board to be supportive of the homeschools and the German Baptist community, you know, of, of, of this... I don't know, the, the opportunities is sports and, and the clubs, and I just want the board to be mindful of that, thank you for that opportunity.
Ms.?
Yeah, the only thing I have, um, I wish that I had thought to put this on the agenda, um, I guess time is passing, and school will be starting in a few weeks. Um, do we have an update on what, how successful the Sheriff's Office been with identifying part-time help for our SRO positions?
Um, Ms. Smith, members of the board, um, I don't know if the sheriff here, I see, um, Mr. Holly here, and they hit the audience, and that's probably not necessarily in his, his purview, uh, so we won't put him on the spot. Um, so I don't necessarily have a direct, uh, update, you know, on how that process may go, and of course, that's a sheriff's constitutional, you know, responsibility of, of, of making those hires. Uh, I do think, of course, Mr. Carter was out of the office last week, we have been in touch, uh, with, um, Megan Houston in the Sheriff's Department, uh, who is running interference on that grant application. Um, Ms. Smith, what I can do is, uh, make a note and reach out and get a status update for the board, maybe, um, this week, and send that out to the board. Um, of course, I know the, uh, board last month, uh, the, the consensus was to move forward with that grant application with DCJS, looking at part-time for those eight positions. And so, we're doing some verification back with the Department of Criminal Justice Services, so that they understand that, you know, that is part-time. Um, all the while being sensitive not to shut the door i- in the future for those other grants, but I'll, I'll make a note to get a, to get a status update check.
I appreciate that, I would just like to know what the expectations are for parents on day one.
Sure.
Of the new school year. Thank you.
Yes.
Anything else?
No, sir, thank you.
All right, I just have a couple of things I would like to add on what Mr. Thompson said about the homeschoolers, and, and if, if there's some way that our public school can reach out and partner with, with in some way, cause it may be a twofold benefit, the schools, the public school, which has been suffering the last several years with a reduced ADM, if we can partner with our homeschool association here in Franklin County, and, and, and maybe the private schools or whatever, and work together to, to offer programs, maybe it'll help with our ADM issues. I, I don't know, but, uh, that, that's, that's something for our school board, I see my school board rep sitting in the back, so that's a challenge for you there, to look into it, may, may, may be something that'll help us. And then, the next thing I wanted to bring up, uh, just this past week, I received a phone call from a gentleman who had just built a house in, in my district, and he told me, he said, "I've been in construction for twenty-two years." He said, "I wanna just tell you that the building inspectors that helped me with my house this past week were by far the best that I've ever worked with," and I'm telling you, I almost fell out of my seat. Because I, you know, when John Brockman first came to work here, I sat right here and told him, I said, "If you wanna make me happy, get rid of some of these complaints that we get called in on building inspectors, because every board member up here will tell you, one of the biggest, most frequent complaints we get are on building inspectors, they have a tough job to do." But, this man called, he said, "The two that helped me," and he gave me their names, it was Bob and Trevor, and I came up here to see their boss, and I told Chris, "Make sure they know that, that they're probably gonna have a, a coronary fall out like I almost did, but I believe in, you know, when our employees do something we don't like, we were quick to tell them, but by George, when they do something that we appreciate, we need to be quick to tell them that too." And I just wanted to tell, and put it on their record, that our building inspectors, from this gentleman's, uh, viewpoint, he said they were professional, they were helpful in every way. He said the only thing that he, he, he said, "You need to get them some shirts that tell who they are, so I don't shoot them, because I didn't recognize them," and he said they need a, uh, updated laptop. So, I've relayed all that to Mr. Whitlow, because these men and women are getting out there and doing a service for our county, we need to make sure that we give them the equipment they need to do that service. And the, the next thing, uh, last thing on my list is, in the last couple of weeks, I know there's been a lot of talk going out about the land in Farum, the county-owned property that we have in Farum. I had a phone call last week from a gentleman, I had an email, people calling me wanting to know, "What's, what's going on with this Section Eight proposal in Farum?" Well, for one thing, there is no Section Eight proposal in Farum. There, uh, we're, we've had a housing study that was done to tell us the maximum amount that could go in that property, that's all we've had done. Now, now, we're, we're put together an RFP to put out a proposal to get ideas in, and I know we've got some local proposals that, uh, are gonna come in, and we don't know where, who else may send any, any type of proposals, but right now, there are no proposals for any type of Section Eight housing, there, there is no proposal to put four hundred residents up there on that property, or two hundred residents on that property. All that study was to tell us what could be built there, that's not anything that, as far as I'm concerned, we're looking at or considering. Beautiful plot of land, I think there are multiple uses for that land, there's residential, there's public park space that I think can be utilized. I, I mean, I rode up there the other day and just got, walked up there looking around, and, uh, I had to run from a skunk, but other than that, it was, it's a beautiful area. It is natural, the, the aesthetics are there, and it needs to be protected, it needs to be managed, and nee- needs to be done in a very tasteful way, and I feel assured, and I know I've got a bunch of smiling faces out in the audience tonight, I know that what they're here for is to lend their support for the development of this park, and just know that... I think, you know, in government, we get a lot of times get frustrated, cause we move so slow, but I would rather move slow and get it right. And so, that's, that's where I'm at, uh, I support a very tasteful proposal in that place. I'm against going in there and just flooding it with, with residential structures, I don't think that we need to meet our needs, but, you know, we, we know there's also a good tasteful use for, for that land as far as opening up trails, I mean, I've talked to Paul Chapman, Reba Dillon has been apparently looked around, you know, other ideas as far as having that as a community park that can be utilized for multiple reasons and purposes for the county. So, that's where I'm at, I look forward to hearing from some of you all in just a few minutes, but I wanted to just lay that out there, anybody else have anything before we finish up with other matters?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just add a comment to the comments that you and Mr. Thompson have made regarding, um, extracurricular activities and so forth, um, at the high school. Um, I don't know if it was local level discussion, but I think it's at the DOE level, that there is discussion that is pertaining to that directly, about involving Virginia's, um, you know, charter schools, the private, you know, private schools, homeschool children, um, the opportunity to participate in with their peers, um, in some of these ancillary programs. So, I don't think that, that it's something not being talked about, uh, and I think there's an acknowledgement that these kids need those types of, of interventions at the high school level, you know, to make sure that they're fully developing and that they're getting those opportunities.
Anyone else have anything before we move on?
I do have one thing.
Go ahead.
I meant, I, I should've mentioned about the FFA, about the, uh, I was proud to see them here tonight, like I said, I was raised on the farm myself. Uh, that's Frank Cunnings' number one business, is agriculture, and I support them one hundred percent, and I'd like to see more of it.
Anyone else? All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have reached a time set aside in our meeting for public comment. Public comment gives citizens an opportunity to address the board in writing, or in, uh, in writing on matters appropriate to responsibilities of the board. Speakers must direct all comments to the board as a whole, and not to individual board members or employees of the board or county. Personal attacks or insulting, profane, or vulgar language will not be tolerated. Likewise, commentary on issues that are not within the purview of the board, and that are not a function of local government, and over which we have no control, are not acceptable. Public comment is not a question and answer session, and board members will not answer questions during public comment. If a speaker violates these rules, the chair may rule the speaker out of order, and upon a second violation, have the speaker removed from the podium. Madam Clerk, please call the first speaker.
Jessica O'Neil, would you please come to the podium?
State your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, Jessica O'Neil, six seventy-four Morgan's Fork Road, Penhoe, Virginia.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, ladies and gentlemen, esteemed local officials, fellow citizens of Franklin County, I stand before you today as a proud, tax-paying resident who has been called, who has called this county home for the past thirty-three years. We have seen our community grow and evolve, and we have weathered many storms together. Today, I come to you with a plea, a plea for support in realizing a dream that will uplift our county and secure a better future for all of its, um, citizens. Last month, I read a interesting article that highlighted a surplus of funds. This surplus presents a unique opportunity for us to invest in the betterment of Franklin County. And what better way to utilize these funds than by directing them towards affordable housing initiatives? Affordable housing is an urgent need in our community, many hard-working families and young professionals and seniors struggle to find suitable, affordable homes. This shortage creates a ripple effect, impacting not only those in need, but also our local economy and social fabric. By providing financial support for our affordable housing plans, we can address this pressing issue head-on. We envision a Franklin, we envision a county where everyone have access to safe, decent, and affordable housing. With the allocated funds, we can build and improve the infrastructure necessary to make this vision a reality. We can create communities that foster a sense of belonging and empower our citizens to thrive. Supervisor Lori Smith emphasizes the importance of funding generational projects that will benefit our county for years to come. I could not agree more. Investing in affordable housing is a generational project. A leg- a legacy we can... A leg- a legacy we can leave for future generations. It is an investment in the very essence of our community, reflecting our values and commitment to the well-being of all residents. By directing those um surplus funds towards affordable housing, we are not only addressing by an immediate need, but also laying the foundation for a stronger, more exclusive county. This investment will pay dividends for years to come, improving the quality of life of our fellow citizens and attracting new residents to our community. I hope you can join us in this pursuit. Stand with us in supporting affordable housing initiatives that will uplift our county, strengthen our economy, and build more equitable future. Let us seize this opportunities to make a lasting difference and set an example for other communities to follow. Together, we can um transform into a powerful way for change. Let us be the architect of future where Franklin County shines as a beacon of affordable housing success. I urge you to consider the importance of this call and allocate the necessary financial support to turn our vision into reality. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rebecca Saunders?
If you will, state your name and address for the record, please.
Rebecca Saunders, two four five Nature Zone Road, Farum. Uh I'd just like to give a shout out to John Brothman and his team. They are fantastic.
Thank you.
Uh I'd like to take this time to introduce you to my Farum. Um Farum is a hundred-plus folks coming out in a hot Monday evening in July to buy some ice cream for a good cause, hang out, and listen to amazing folk music. It's rallying together around an idea and having the sheer force of will to believe it into being and the follow-through to make it a reality. Farum is the strum of sprain strings on a summer afternoon with the sound of dozens of voices singing old Appalachian music. Every Monday night, Appalachian Music at Farum College hosts their Monday Night Jams where local musicians gather to play their music. It's absolutely magical. Farum is a homesteaders' dream. It's a place where people come to raise gardens, chickens, and their babies, full of hard-working folks who know the meaning of survival in their bones. Farum folks know how to get things done, and if they don't, they definitely know someone who does. Uh our community is amazing because we are the sum of our whole. Uh Farum is a farmer's market full of artisans, crafters, and growers who spent years honing their skills. It's hours upon hours and years upon years of sore fingers, busted backs, and tired legs that create these beautiful moments. It's Appalachia at its finest and its best. I encourage each of you to stop by our farmer's market one Saturday morning and see for yourselves. Farum is a college whose motto is not self, but others, and that concept is wholeheartedly embraced by the students and the faculty. I have never seen a college work so hard to connect with and embrace the surrounding community like Farum College does. Farum is embracing folks like myself and my family, travelers who grew up on the other side of the Appalachians, but who aren't from here. Some folks might have you believe that Farum isn't welcoming to outsiders, but I know for a fact that that's not true. What Farum folks aren't welcome to is outsiders who want to change what makes Farum so special. Farum doesn't need to change. Farum needs to be embraced, uplifted, and allowed to shine for all the amazing things it already is. Farum is all of this and so much more. Um if you look behind me, you can see for yourself. This is Farum. This is why I'm so deeply proud to call this place my home. Every single one of these people and so many more who couldn't be here tonight. This community has opened its arms to my family, and we have found a home here in ways that we never imagined. And I ask you to remember this as you go forward in deciding what happens to the eighty-two acres here in Farum. Help us preserve and protect what makes Farum amazing. Our strength lies in our community. Give us the chance to show you what we can do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Kathy Cummins?
Other speakers that are with Farum?
I want, no. I just want to get this over with. I'm sorry, as um we just said we had to do a blur, so can I just go and get this over with? It's like a school ball over again. Feel so sorry for my children.
If you will, state your name and address for the record, please.
Uh Amy Ryder, fifty-six nineteen Franklin Street in Farum. And I just want to say, I'm sure your job is very difficult, um to try to please everybody, and I know that's impossible. Um I just want to say that I became a member of Farum Forward in the park, um just like two months ago. And I've been here for twelve years, and uh my whole thing was to give my children a better life. I'm unfortunately from Maryland, um but I'm not one of those mean northerners. Um we came here and I just wanted to say that, you know, the mountains we take for granted and the wildlife, and it just would be a shame to see it all go to waste. So that's all I had to say.
Thank you. State your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Jenny West, two eight three nine Beach Mountain Road, Farum. I came last month to clarify that Farum Forward as an organization had not fully, in any official capacity, supported the uh housing plan options. I come tonight to say that at our Farum Forward meeting, um I think just last week, we did have a motion to say that we fully support the Friends of Farum Park proposal, which I know is one of which you all may be reviewing um in the near future. I think what's been amazing is how, and I give you all some credit because you all started this process. What's been amazing is how the Farum community has really galvanized, and I think in a most positive fashion. I think when you see that proposal, you will see that it does include some housing. I think most Farum folks are not against some housing, but it also includes some other really important features, which will address tourism. It will address possible campsites for family members of the college. If you have more cycling events, which I just read that maybe Roanoke is really getting into that, and I know Franklin County was a part of the recent cycling, that it can come down our way, and we may be able to help with that. So we may end up with linking the Smith Mountain Lake area that many people think gets all the attention to the southern part of the county. So I think it's got a lot of potential, and um it's been a very exciting process, I think, for folks in Farum. Thank you.
State your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Katrina Harrison. I live at ten forty-one Running Brook Road in Farum. And I am a lifelong resident and small business owner in Farum. I'm also a member of Farum Forward and Friends of uh Farum Park, where I'm committee chair of one and a board member respectively of the other. I don't think I would be a member of either if I didn't feel that we could make positive change for our community. And I speak in support of the park plan that Rebecca and Ed had put together. It uses feedback from Farum residents and also addresses issues from uh the original Farum Village Plan. I'm I'm more confident in this plan being put together by Farum locals than the one that the county did with its consultants, because after all, who's more invested? It takes time and effort to be involved. Rebecca and Ed Saunders have invested much of each, and I feel that this should receive serious consideration. Thank you.
State your name and address for the record, Bob.
Bob Pollard, eight hundred Thompson Ridge Road, Farum, Virginia. I haven't lived here all my life. I've lived here forty-five years, and I work at the lake and work in Farum and have for many years. Now I'm retired, and I speak in favor, well, I think I'm retired. It seems like I have more work to do. I I guess I'm not, but um, you know, I have to re-retire. I guess that's the way that works. But uh I speak in favor of this. As a biologist, as a person that works very hard to both take care of the lake and take care of local natural areas, um I just walked the area um with Ed, looked at the trails that are there. I know the trails on the Farum campus so well and the capability of connecting those. I just honestly feel like this type of plan that supports the Farum community is just a, you know, it's a tremendous boost for all of the people that are living out there because they get the opportunity, in my opinion, to um enjoy areas that I can lead hikes for them and and the students can take advantage. We've got an elementary school across the road uh that the students, I've led trips for them many, many times. We've talked, Phoebe Needles is is not far, and the individuals at Phoebe Needles and the directors there are interested in use of that facility and the natural areas. So um I just, I I wanted to get up and speak in favor of that and would be happy to uh uh speak to any one of you individually if you'd like. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rick Sloan?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Come on up. State your name and address for the record, please.
Emily Blankenship Tucker, nine five five Wetstone Road, Farum, Virginia. Thank you very much for the opportunity to put in my two cents. I've lived in Farum as a year-round resident since two thousand and three. I bought my home in two thousand and five. I was drawn to Farum by two major things, Farum College and the fact that it exists in such a rural setting. It was very important to me. I felt welcomed into the community when I arrived, and I strive to be welcoming to other folks as they come into our community and join us. I think we have a very special sense of community that is growing and thriving. And I would like to say that I support the efforts and the voices of the members of my community as this proposal is worked out. And I ask that the members of the board please consider the value of healthy, green, and wild space that has the potential to be an asset to our community, that has the potential to draw new folks who see what's special about Farum. Also, to please consider the value of healthy residents of Farum, Virginia, as we all look together to the future for our community and our children. Thank you.
Yes, Rick Sloan.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Rick Sloan, twenty-five thirty Fairmounton Road. And I have to say, Steve Engel right there was the first person I ever met in Franklin County back in nineteen seventy-four when I moved to Callaway, and it was quite an introduction to lifestyle.
And you still stayed?
Uh oh, man, I wouldn't go anywhere. I I love Farum. My wife loves Farum. I love Franklin County. It's 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 just amazing. And and I'm gonna read on this because my wife put it together for me because she's a better thinker. "Thank y'all for allowing the public to speak in support of Friends of Farum Park Plan. As long-term residents of Farum, my wife and I support the Friends of Farum Park Plan," that is a tongue-twister, "to better serve Farum and Franklin County. There's definitely a need for a nonprofit support for affordable housing and amenities for ADA, seniors, and young families from our area to be able to stay in Farum. The protected Farum Nature Park and event space is beneficial to the health and well-being of our community and would be an asset for the whole county, not just Farum. Would you not support the Franklin County? I appreciate clarifying y'all's feelings somewhat on that, too, so I'm not even gonna get into any more of that. The Friends of Farum Park Plan could be an excellent example for cooperation between the Franklin County residents of and Farum and surrounding communities. The Friends of Farum Park Plan will guarantee a pr- a protected natural resource for the whole community now and for the future. And thanks again. Appreciate it."
Thank you.
Kathy Cummins?
State your name and address, please.
Kathy Cummins. I live at three five seven nine Kemp Ford Road in Union Hall, but I might go spend some time in Farum. Thank you, the Board of Supervisors, for the job that you all do. The Confederate statue in front of the courthouse in Rocky Mountain is believed to be a memorial to local men who fought for the Confederacy in the Civil War. It was erected in nineteen ten in an effort driven by the United Daughters of the Confederacy. At its base, the inscription indicates that it was sponsored by the Jubal Early Chapter of the UDC and R. H. Fishburne. United Daughters placed hundreds of these statues all over the South and even north of the Mason-Dixon Line as a tribute to the lost cause. Historical records of the United Daughters make their intent very clear. But raising funds for these statues required a selling point, such as, "This is a memorial to your local soldiers, men the community might remember." The donor recruited for the Rocky Mount statue was Reuben Harvey Fishburne. A son of a Franklin County tobacco farmer, Reuben joined the Thirty-seventh Battalion of the Virginia Cavalry as a young man. In later years, he became a wealthy businessman residing in Roanoke, well-known for being generous with the less fortunate surviving soldiers with whom he fought, often providing for their welfare. Notes on file that Franklin County Historical Society indicate that Reuben Fishburne was not happy with the nineteen-ten statue. He largely paid for. Jubal Early's name is prominently featured, rather than those of Fishburne's own comrade-in-arms, as he had specified. The vast majority of the Confederate soldiers were not wealthy like Mr. Fishburne. They had nothing to gain and much to lose from the secession of the southern states. They may or may not have understood that they were at war to protect an economy which depended on the enslavement of human beings. In order to buy into that, they had to accept propaganda that black people were not fully human and slavery was the best way for them to live. Winning the war was not going to benefit poor white people in any material way, but as a white person, they could at least aspire to be like their white bosses and landlords. Removal of the Confederate statue from in front of the courthouse is not an attempt to erase history, as some citizens contest. It is an effort to end the government's endorsement of a symbol that has always represented the deliberate oppression of hundreds of thousands of people. This historical symbol belongs somewhere else and not on the government's front lawn. These statues are being relocated all over Virginia, one by one. It's time, Franklin County. Thank you.
Glenn Moore?
Good evening. Glenn Hawkins Moore, Scenic River Drive, Snow Creek District. Uh this is part three of a four-port park story about Nancy Beverly and her sons, Herod and Samuel. They left Franklin County in the mid eighteen hundreds. The eighteen-fifty Ohio Census finds Nancy, fifty-five years old, and her two sons, Herod, twenty, and Samuel, eleven, in Lawrence County, Ohio. Ohio's treatment of African-Americans was not perfect, but to free blacks living, leaving Franklin County, Virginia, it must have been like the promised land because Ohio offered more opportunities for their children to be educated. Black men in Ohio were first given a chance to fight in the Civil War when Governor David Todd asked permission of the U.S. War Department to form an African-American Ohio Regiment. Permission was granted in June of eighteen sixty-three. Soon after, the unit was recognized as the Fifth United States Colored Infantry, to which the Beverly Brothers enlisted. Samuel enlisted first on June second, eighteen sixty-three, in Richmond, Ohio. His older brother, Herod, enlisted two months later, in August of eighteen sixty-three, in Summit County, Ohio. He was thirty-five. Herod was in Company D, and Samuel was in Company B. They were both under command of the infamous Union general, Benjamin They were both under command of the infamous Union general, Benjamin Butler, known as, known for sheltering runaway slaves at Fort Monroe at the beginning of the Civil War. Rather than returning the slaves to the Confederacy under the fugitive slave law, he declared the South's human property to be contraband of war. Since the Confederacy no longer a part of the United States, their laws were no longer valid. This gave enslaved blacks refuge, and it weakened the Southern war effort by reducing slave labor the Confederates needed to run their farms and plantations back home. It also took away slaves that would have been requisitioned by Confederate President Jefferson Davis to work on Confederate fortifications. In fact, over seven hundred enlisted men from Franklin County were ordered to Richmond, Virginia, to labor for the Confederacy. I stand here at seventy-one years old, proud and woke, to learn that nearly two hundred thousand black Union soldiers were a big part of the overwhelming numbers the Confederacy claims as the primary reason they lost the war. Next month, I'll share the fate of Nancy's sons. Thank you.
Mr. C. Holland, Purdue III?
Holland Purdue, mayor of town of Rocky Mount, two forty-five South Main Street, Rocky Mount, Virginia. I was elected last November. At that time, I expressed the desire for Rocky Mount Town Council and the Franklin County Board of Supervisors to work together more effectively to your chairman, Mr. Tatum. I also expressed a wish that the two governing bodies could convene together for an opportunity to get to know each other, get together, meet, shake hands. Nine months later, that's yet to happen. In two thousand twenty-two, the town of Rocky Mount purchased a one-point-one-million-dollar fire truck. Since January twenty-twenty-three, I have made monthly meetings with Mr. Tatum regarding the funding for the purchase of the new ladder truck for the Rocky Mount Fire Department, among other issues. All calls run by the Rocky Mount Fire Department are in Franklin County, but approximately sixty percent of the calls run by the Rocky Mount Fire Department are outside of the town's limits. When we first met, it was noted that the county pays for trucks for every fire department in the county except for the Rocky Mount Fire Department. When a town resident pays their taxes to the county, it funds trucks for all other departments. Why not one for the Rocky Mount Fire Department? I did not get an answer from Mr. Tatum when we were meeting or when I sent a letter to him on June twelfth. I still do not have an answer. Now, I am asking in person for you to help fund the purchase of the ladder truck. If I don't get an answer, I will simply keep asking. Last week, I asked for a meeting with the Board of Supervisors, preferably a closed session as allowed by law, where we may discuss the new hotel development in the town of Rocky Mount. I requested this meeting by way of county staff as well as a letter to each one of you. This request was denied, which is why I'm standing before you today. The town of Rocky Mount staff and my colleagues on Town Council have worked closely with Amit Patel to bring this exciting opportunity for growth to the town of Rocky Mount in Franklin County. We have offered certain financial incentives to secure this project. Our hope is that Franklin County would assist Mr. Patel with additional incentives to bring this project to fruition. Other nearby localities have done similar incentives to attract such development, such as the town of Bedford in Bedford County. My meetings with Tim have unfortunately ended. He cited his schedule as reason. I am here today to renew my calls for communication between Franklin County and the town of Rocky Mount. I also reached out to each of you individually. Each of us is, each of us was elected to represent the citizens of our respective localities. While you have districts, and Rocky Mount is only one of your districts, you are all representatives of Franklin County, and Rocky Mount is in Franklin County. Rocky Mount is not an independent city. Rocky Mount residents pay county taxes like all other residents in the county. Let us work together to realize the best outcomes possible for our constituents, for all of Franklin County. Thank you.
Mr. Ed Saunders?
Hope you all are doing well this evening. I definitely want to commend John Broughton and his team. We have a relatively unusual house, and I'm pretty sure everybody in that department went through it at least once, and they were super helpful in providing us feedback on the code since we built out the house ourselves. So, yeah, great team, great group of guys. Want to thank you all for the time you've taken this evening to listen to kind of some of the folks behind me here. I want to thank all the folks behind me for showing up. It really does mean the absolute world to us that we are part of such, sorry, that we are part of such a community.
Give your name and address first for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ed Saunders, two forty-five Nature Zone Road, Faram.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. So, with that being said, I just wanted to get up here and say that a lot of talk has been made about this plan that we have. Essentially, it keeps being referred to as mine and my wife's plan, but I want everybody to know that it is our community's plan. Every single person that's talked to us has added something to it. And with that, you know, we have this accumulation of knowledge, accumulation of what's worked in Faram, what people want in Faram. And with that being said, all that was taken into consideration in development of our plan. So, hopefully, once that gets to your eyes' desks, you can take a look at it with that knowledge that this is our community. We put this together, and we want to, we want to get behind it, and we want to make it happen. So, thank you guys so much for your time. I hope you have a great evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have no additional speakers.
Okay, is there anyone else here in the gallery tonight that would like to speak?
You've got some good constituents.
Yes, I do.
In Faram District.
I've told people that we call it God's country for a reason. It's filled with godly people and people that don't mind coming out and working together to make their community better. That's what it's all about. With that said, we will adjourn tonight's meeting. We will be adjourned until July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, at five-thirty for a joint meeting with Farm Bureau and the Ag Development Center Committee. Thank you for coming, and have a good night.